... Council meeting of the City Council, City of Pearland from June eighth, two thousand and twenty, being at least six thirty. And for recognition of our, of our visitor, the Irish, we're doing this by telephone and video conferencing. Moving on our agenda down to call and order. Evocation tonight is by Hernandez and our pledge of allegiance by Alondo. Hernandez should start with the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone could please join me in a prayer to start off the night. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for another opportunity for us to convene and come together discussing the business of the city to keep things moving in the right direction. Keep all of our essential city services available for residents, keep everyone safe. And looking forward to a brighter tomorrow and with tomorrow in mind, please help prepare our city and all of our residents to receive Mr. Floyd here in our city for his internment. And so that we might all come together and start healing, not just as a city, but as a nation. Thank you so much for everything that you've given to us as a country and the world to just experience all of these opportunities that you've given us to come together and better ourselves and to walk in your path. And these names, and excuse me, I say we thank the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
All right, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, states, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and endless. And now we'll do this Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, one God, one and indivisible.
Thank you for being with us tonight as we proceed into this council meeting. Since we are doing it by telephone and video conferencing and most people are not able to attend to see it, then we have a roll call and certification before. Council, Mayor Pro Tim Little.
President.
Mayor.
Councilmember Alondo.
Here, Mayor.
Councilmember Alondo.
I'm here, Mayor.
Councilmember Moore.
I'm here, Mayor.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Mayor, I'm here.
Councilmember Perez.
Mayor.
And Councilmember Owens.
Here.
Okay, and Secretary, I satisfy a quorum for the night's meeting. Moving to the next item four on our agenda, which is Simpson comments. Mayor Pro Tim Little, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. We have two citizens that signed up to speak tonight. Remind you that you have three minutes and I'll, if you know, when you've got thirty seconds remaining. And first I'll call you in order I received it, the first person, and be sure to identify your name and, and your address before you start speaking. First speaker, Jimmy Davis.
Mr. Davis, you are unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me? I saw I'm still muted. Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, the phone is showing I was still muted. And speaking on behalf of the chairman of water bill and discussion group, I'll try to keep them within three, but I would hope that can be given more questions, right? Over the last several months, many residents have filed information about the water billing debacle that resulted in larger rears as well as higher base rates this, this year. And that beginning information is the Texas Public Information Act. Unfortunately, residents have denied the mission to have a right to under lock. The city has failed to respond within the required time frame last fall, as evidenced by my request on February eighteen. Yet the city documentation indicates they verified on February nineteen, there was no information. But they decided to not advise me into fourteen business states after my request in violation of the law. The City of Pearland, in response to a different request I made on February nineteen, decided to give me over seven hundred pages of documents. The majority of which had nothing to do with my request. When I asked the city attorney why, I was told the city is on the side of too much information rather than not enough. The Yeltsin and Olson report brought to light multiple documents the city failed to produce that was directly responded to my request as well as others. And asking the city attorney about it, I was told there was a problem with the search query. The city attorney said they couldn't search on utility billing because it would produce too many documents. This seems to contradict previous statements that they would rather appear on the side of too many than not enough. The city attorney provided a list of phrases that was used in my query. It took me two minutes to identify six email chains the city council has received that were not relevant in my request. And the phrases I was told the query was ran on do not appear in those emails. And that is not an exhaustive list, there are many, many more. So now it would appear that the query list I was provided is not accurate or perhaps has been modified. I have to ask why? There are many more documents the city should have provided and has not. Fading to produce documents is a violation of the Texas Public Information Act. Residents have asked for all monthly financial reports. Yet the city didn't produce the monthly water sewer revenue report, which is a monthly financial report. How can we residents have trust in the City of Pearland if they can't get even the basic stuff? We have a problem about water billing and the City of Pearland can provide emails with utility billing in the subject. But they can provide property tax emails, sales tax emails, leadership conference emails, the irony does not mistake it. And don't even provide the attachments to the emails. They can receive a request one day, have an answer the next day, and not communicate it to the resident in the ten days required, all off. When the residents identify documents they should have received that didn't? The question, what else is there? The answer is submit another request and use different words like I'm supposed to trust. I asked also to calling on the Brazilia County District Attorney and the Texas Attorney General Open Records Division to launch an investigation into the City of Pearland not complying with the Texas Public Information Act. That would be a big step toward rebuilding residents' trust in city council. Thank you.
The next speaker, Mr. Durasik, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Did you see the clock in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, state your name and address and then begin speaking.
My name is Dave Durasik, I live at forty-six point three, Russell Place North, Arizona, Texas, seven seven five eight four.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, I'm here to get my solicitor's license back. And I was at the last meeting requesting this and nothing happened. I stayed at the meeting and I listened to y'all talk about block grants and CDGB and all this other stuff about getting help to COVID-19 people. But y'all didn't do anything to help me get my solicitor's license back. You only have a half of a percent, actually it's less than that, a half of a percent of the people with COVID-19 who have ever gotten COVID-19. And they still don't have my license back. The governor's opened up just about everybody to doing business, but I can't get my license back. I would like an explanation. And yes, this is a question for you to answer.
Or we're not allowed to have a dialogue with you during public comment?
I've, I've been here several times requiring to get this back, it's time for y'all to talk or take a vote. Y'all don't sit there one more.
Has staff had any communication with this speaker following his last public address?
Plenty, plenty of it since I got here and I've asked every Sunday, do y'all have it, has it been done? And I've gotten no every time. You gonna sit there and look at yourself? Take a vote, gentlemen.
Sir, Mr. Little was correct in that we cannot dialogue with you, but I, I would like for anybody from staff at least to, I guess, indicate that they'll reach out after the meeting to.
You made, you made the choice to take away my license, this is not a staff thing, this is for you to answer.
Councilmember Hernandez, this is Crystal. I have made contact with Mr. Durasik indicating when those licenses will then be resumed. I will follow up with an email to city council after this meeting.
Thank you, Crystal, appreciate that.
Okay, we'll be nothing. Y'all done nothing. What you have related to me is that I can't get my license back until the governor opens up everything. That's not fair to me. Everybody else is doing business but me. I need my license back.
That completes your comment. All right, thank you, sir. Mayor, that completes our public comment. Mayor?
Okay. Let's move into our agenda, item number five, which is public hearing, which we don't have often in the record. I'll ask, I believe this item is going to be, I would ask that he introduce and read the second public hearing dialogue and make his staff review.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Mayor and council, tonight's agenda calls for council to conduct the second of two public hearings in accordance with rules in twenty-four CFR ninety-one point one oh five. Those are HUD regulations, which involves the citizen participation requirements and the code of federal regulations for reprogramming and reallocation of fiscal year twenty twenty community development block grant funding in the amount of sixty thousand dollars for social services activities within the city and to the COVID-19 pandemic. As presented in the prior public hearing on May eighteenth, the CARES Act would provide HUD grantees with an opportunity to take advantage of a number of waivers applicable to the CDVG program. Specifically, it gave us the opportunity to spend more of the city's annual allocation on social services activity, removing the traditional fifteen percent spending cap that was normally being imposed on our funds each year, and that will be the case through the end of fiscal year twenty-one. It also gave us the ability to implement approved spending priorities without submission of an annual action plan until August of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, and that will be the case for our current planning year as well as the FY twenty-one planning year and any stimulus funds associated with our HUD allocation. And finally, it's given us the ability to reduce the thirty-day public comment period to a minimum five-day period through fiscal year FY twenty twenty-one. Staff made the decision to reduce that in this case to a nine-day public comment period, including the two public hearings that have been conducted, the one on May eighteenth and the one before us tonight. And the provisions altogether provide the city the ability to quickly and further extend our reach with CDVG funds into the social services community, and staff make the following recommendations towards the use of certain funds at the end of the required planning and amendment process. For fiscal year nineteen, the city engaged in the planning process regarding the spending priorities for the current year's community development block grant program, which included the intent to support the renovation and rehabilitation of Pearland Training Depot. While that project continues to have merits and qualifies for the use of CDVG funds, primarily under the offices of historic preservation regulation, COVID-19 definitely represents an obvious urgent need for a response, and HUD has made provisions that allow us to quickly engage in amendments to our plan. And staff recommend we take advantage of some of those amendments. We are also looking at this item as the reallocation item, because it's not at the current time a timely spending project, and we want to make sure that we comply with HUD rules for timely spending assistance, and that's another additional opportunity for us to reallocate those funds in a way that will help the city maintain its timeliness and keep funds moving at the pace HUD requires and help the community at the same time. So with that, staff proposed to then shift the planned expenditure of sixty thousand dollars from this item and reprogram it to use in the following ways. We will allocate twenty thousand dollars for actions of Brazilia for meal deliveries to the elderly and disabled. We recommend allocating twenty thousand dollars for Pearland Neighborhood Center for emergency subsistence in the form of rent and utility assistance. And finally, another twenty thousand dollars for counseling connections for change for mental health services and related total medicine capability. Next slide. So just a quick overview of the history of actions we've taken so far. With the conclusion of this public hearing, we will have concluded the citizen involvement and staff council input and discussion items required by HUD. We will have conducted the public comment period commensurate with HUD CARES Act waivers that have been administered for the benefit of our public. And we will have also completed the public comment period from May twenty-first through May twenty-ninth. At the conclusion of this item, there is a consent agenda item that speaks directly to the city's ability to take action on these recommendations, and that will be in the form of Agenda Item D and Resolution R twenty twenty dash one zero nine. Following tonight's consideration of possible actions, after the conclusion of a public hearing, staff will make the necessary adjustments to the plan, make that amendment, and provide HUD with that information so that we can get their approval for spending funds, and we will then subsequently provide subrecipient agreements or amendments as applicable to the subrecipient agencies that will be reallocated these funds. With that, Mayor and council, that completes the staff report, and I will pass back the balance of the discussion to council.
Moving into our agenda, the next item, which is completed, the public hearing announcements and the staff review. Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim, citizen comments?
Councilmember Little, you're on mute.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak on this topic or against it? Second request, anyone wishing to speak for or against it? Third final request, anyone wishing to speak for or against this public hearing? Nobody out there, Mayor?
Okay, that completes your report?
Yes, Mayor.
Moving into our agenda to a item which is called council and staff discussion, this is where an opportunity for us to make our final comments. As we have reviewed the process and we've heard the comments from our staff on the issues. Moving to our council, we have, if any items that the council would like to discuss, make a comment on, I'd ask that you give us your names so we can identify progress. And go ahead and state your discussion item.
Mayor, this is Carbone.
Yes.
The, I mean, this is a public hearing and Mayor Pro Tim asked if anybody's going to speak, but unless somebody just barges into one of our houses, we're not going to hear anything. So I guess, and I asked this last time, so maybe Joel can hit on how the public has had an opportunity to give their input, and then was there any input received and when does that window close down? I assume it's as of the passing of Item D tonight?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, Member Carbone. Yes, we did republish a notice prior to this public hearing to again reiterate the instructions required to solicit public comment for this item. You know, we did have a public comment period officially on May first, May twenty-first through May the twenty-ninth. And however, you know, as I stated in the last public hearing, I tend to incorporate any public comments we receive related to CDVG, and even those that we've received under tonight's citizen comment agenda, simply because they mentioned CDVG, those will be passed on the HUD in the form of the citizen comment section of our amendment to HUD. We have not received anything along those lines in the form of an email or telephone call or anything in writing, other than an email from a citizen that was concerned about the availability of rental assistance and didn't necessarily mention CDVG, but that does express a need that's represented in our plan, so we'll include that as well. You know, historically, we have not received a lot of dialogue or discussion from the public around these items, and you know, I think that our program is fairly simple, we don't address a complex set of circumstances, and I think we've kind of focused on the things that are five years in solidly a plan and the priorities in the community and the dollar amounts we have available through the program allow us to address. So you know, with that said, you know, we can in the future incorporate any concern you may have about, you know, how we get more involvement. HUD is definitely always wanting us to do that as well. We've got additional staff assigned to the project now, so we'll do what we can to increase citizen involvement as, you know, the future comes along. But as far as this is concerned, I think we've done what we've met the requirements, and we don't have any concerns or public comment from the public.
Thank you for that, and I mean, I fully support the, I guess, the three reallocations on here, and thank you for your work.
Any of the council members who would like to make a comment?
Yes, Mayor, just a couple of any comments.
Your pardon.
Clarifications, this is Member Perez. Joel, just for clarification, later on the agenda, we do have some discussion about allocations via the CARES Act and other federal funding coming through FEMA that may be used for similar purposes. It is my expectation and my understanding that any allocations that come from that will be on top of the CDVG.
Yes, so this is a separate allocation of funds, and actually, this is not even coronavirus, specific to the extent that it comes from the CARES Act. This is our current regular allocation of CDVG money. It's just that the CARES Act has administered a provision that allows the HUD secretary to produce a waiver for certain conditions, and those conditions allow us to spend our current allocation of money in ways that help with the COVID-19 issues are concerned, specifically social services. And we've had some limitations in the past and just remove those, and it gets more money out in the community.
And so our fifty thousand has been allocated from a previous amount that was dedicated towards the UTA train depot, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so have we received any comments, either public or private in any way, from those who are trying to organize the renovation of the depot? You know, have we had any?
No, we have not, and you know, my other thought, Your Honor, was that there were previous council actions or discussions related to the meat of investments going into that project that came from other sources, and you know, these would be held off until those came to fruition as well. So kind of a different set of discussion items related to this that may have not come from the previous public hearing, but these funds weren't intended to match those. So while that item is not off the table, reallocating funds back into that priority would take place if and only if there is additional funding, of course, to fully renovate the depot. But we have not removed it from consideration, it's just kind of put on the back burner, if you will.
Fair enough, so in the subsequent year as we evaluate CDVG, we can reevaluate whether there is enough funds for us to match for the renovation of the train depot. So we're not going to, just so they kill the project, it just delays it, and somewhat delays it necessarily since they weren't, they hadn't even come up with a matching fund, correct?
Precisely.
Okay, all right, well, just something to discuss as we get into CDVG discussions for next year, whether we want to allocate for that and, you know, whether we want to require, maybe make a requirement that they come up with a matching fund before we allocate the CDVG. Yeah, I mean, this is a necessary reallocation in spite of COVID, so I appreciate all work you put in, Joel.
Any of the council members, council member? Hearing none, let's move up to staff rent of comments, Mr. Hardy.
No other comments, Mayor. We're prepared to take this as a support for the recommendations. We do have a consent agenda item, number D, that will put this into effect and will allow us to take the amendment to HUD so we can get closer to allocating these funds to the social service agency.
Okay, with that information on the record, will the, this particular citizen and citizen comments stand for due in public hearing will be adjourned at seven ten. Moving into our agenda, to the consent agenda, which consists of items A through D, and I'll ask, Mayor Pro Tim, if he'll give me the items to be removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Owens has asked that Item A Alpha be removed, and Councilman Perez has asked for Item B Delta to be removed, so A and D, Alpha, Delta.
Alpha, D for dog, huh? Okay. Moving into our agenda for the, am I completing, any other items, Mayor Pro Tim? Except for two?
Just those two.
Okay, I'll ask our expert on consent agenda, Councilmember Alondo, to present this for our consideration.
Consideration and possible action, oh, sorry, consideration on the consent agenda with the exception of Items A and D, so moved.
Second. This is Moore.
We have a motion. There are second for those?
Yes, second, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, on both items, wait for the, those except for the ones that have been pulled in. Adam Secretary, we have a motion second on for.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero to approve all the said items with the exception of Item A and Item B.
Okay, Councilmember Alondo, would you present Items A for our consideration?
Sure, Mayor, consideration of possible action, resolution number R twenty twenty dash one zero three, so moved.
Second.
Councilmember Moore.
We have a second, we're in discussion?
Mayor, this is Woody. I asked that they were both, asked a couple of questions on that. How often do we have people to go out and inspect the equipment that we have in the parks? Does anyone know who does, is that park department? I don't know.
So, we can follow up on that, Member Owens, and get your report about our inspections on that. So, I mean, the item is for the ward of Zelinski, so.
Well, I just wanted some of the pictures play, I see that some of the things are rusted completely in two, so I'm just kind of thinking, you know, you don't have steel runners to, you know, to rust completely in two overnight, and, you know, these are expensive items to be replaced. And one other thing on there, too, we're going to pay them, what, six thousand dollars to tear the one down on Zelinski and haul it off, is there any way that we could save that money and let the public works remove that? There's not that much equipment over there.
You know, to dispose it properly, and it's not just removal, it's to break that down and then the tips and all that to separate that, so I think that's part of the bait, too, I don't know if they're going to salvage it, so it's really not an option to strip that out at this point.
No, that's, that's out of our call. So, I was just wondering on that. But yeah, this is not the first time I'm up on the parks over there, some things rusting completely in two, last time there were boats and that rusted completely in two. And those things don't happen overnight, so evidently there's not much of inspection going on of equipment that we purchased, that's put it out there, or it would be noted on there, and some of these, it's going to be a while before, you know, these items are replaced, I think, you know. And some of these, if it's gonna be a while before, uh, you know, these items are replaced, I think, you know, we should, uh, from the city standpoint, uh, especially this one on Zelensky, uh, send somebody over there to put the yellow tape around it and, and, uh, block it off and not let anybody play on that playground until we get the new equipment in. I don't want to see some kid get hurt, uh, from a lack of us doing some work on it, so...
Well, a- as for the additions, I mean, uh, this, the, the park renovations and replacements of, that, that's the very reason why, because the inspections we used is why it's, uh, uh, was, was brought up for bond consideration two years ago and, and put to the voters. And, uh, at least one of those pictures does have tape on that, so it's, it's inspected regularly, we'll show you that and, uh, follow up on that.
All right.
Yeah. Well, I, I have a question on it, too. Is there any, is there any maintenance that's done on these things? I mean, maybe if those, those bars were, you know, painted over the life of the, uh, equipment, maybe it wouldn't have rusted away like that and we could've got a little bit, a little bit more longevity out of it.
I mean, there, there is maintenance on that, uh, the, the equipment that, that you see there was, uh, I'm looking in the memo, it says when it was installed, seventeen years old, so I'm not saying that, uh, that's wise, but there's, there is maintenance on that and that, after seventeen years of use and weather, uh, you know, it, it does get maintained as best we can, but it, it deteriorates, too.
To complete your report, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Moore?
I'm done, Mayor.
Uh, any other council members or, uh, questions or?
Mayor, just a, a procedural question on page fifteen of eighteen of that agenda item is the sales proposal. It looks like it's already been signed off and accepted by both the company and the city.
Uh, I don't know if they, they filled that out or what, that, uh, I see what you're looking at. I don't know if they filled that in before, but we don't want to sign this stuff until the action.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I do see a, a signature above that, so I'll double check on that, Mayor, uh... So I don't know if they did, did that.
Clay, this is Trent. The, the actual contract is on page ten of eighteen, that's our general services contract, and it's only been signed by them.
Okay. That, that councilor, questions on this item? Yeah, Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second on the floor here.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Council, Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owen?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, moving, Councilmember Alondo, would you present item number D?
Consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty twenty dash one zero nine, so moved.
Second, Councilman Little. We have a motion, and a second we're in discussion, staff report on our side.
I'll, uh, ask Joel, even when we did have just public hearing, but, uh, Joel gave, can you add that on that?
Uh, no, sir, no, sorry, no additional staff report.
So, Mayor, uh, we don't have anything to add from, uh, what was previously discussed?
Uh, Mayor, I asked to pull this item, so I have the opportunity of saying I'm on the Parlayed Neighborhood Center Board.
Okay.
Uh, and it's in best interest of the citizens that I not vote for an allocation to a board for which I serve.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, and this is a member Orlando, I serve on the board as well and will, uh, will also abstain from this vote.
Okay, any other comment by council? Item Secretary, I believe we have motion second on the floor, based on sound.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Ora?
Aye.
Councilmember Owen?
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to item number seven, which has matters removed from the consent agenda. We just had those two items. We'll, we'll begin our agenda, item number eight, which is new business. Moving to item number one, I'll ask Councilmember Carbone if he'll present this for our consideration.
Thank you, Mayor, consideration and possible action resolution R twenty twenty dash one oh seven, so moved. Second, this is Moore.
We have a motion, second on the floor. Uh, staff report?
Thank you, Member Reed, and then council members, uh, very pleased to present to this, uh, uh, proposal for you for construction services, uh, using a construction manager at risk or CMAR approach, uh, which we've, uh, used successfully in the past, which is allowed for in state law. Uh, so this particular recommendation is to go with, uh, Jurotech, uh, after an evaluation of the various proposals. Uh, Jurotech would be, uh, coming alongside of us and, uh, uh, going through the, uh, construction documents and, and building that up, uh, and give us a, uh, a guaranteed, uh, maximum price, uh, for these projects. It's actually two, uh, city installations, uh, side by side on Freedom Drive, north side there, uh, next to our public safety building. Uh, one is for a new, uh, replacement animal services, uh, shelter and adoption center. Uh, that was approved by the voters in the twenty nineteen May bond issue. Um, and so we're, uh, following through on that as promised. Uh, and the second project next door that is, we're, uh, in need of replacing existing fire station number four, uh, which is, uh, uh, was built, uh, prior to, uh, modern expectations with a, um, uh, full-time department. Um, and so we need to bring that one up to, to current standards. And, and so these buildings side by side only makes sense to have one contractor that's working there, uh, on the projects and has, uh, uh, so the city's not paying duplicate for mobilization or staging and have different contractors pointing, uh, at each other for any issues that may occur. So, uh, we, we're very clear about the, uh, the, the nature of these two separate buildings, but, uh, they'll be coordinated well with this approach. Uh, the funding source for these on the animal shelter is, uh, the, uh, the, uh, bond issues, general obligation bonds. And the, uh, uh, fire station four, as we've done, uh, most of our public safety installations is with the certificates of obligation. Uh, no surprises, these have been, uh, identified in the capital improvement program, identified in your prior actions for the, uh, intent to reimburse and, uh, uh, some of the bond issue financing that you've seen and will see. Uh, so it'll be, uh, no different than we do on any other, uh, major projects where we have, uh, cost accounting from various funding sources, whether it be from, uh, keeping straight the enterprise fund, uh, monies, uh, separate from the other monies. Uh, also, we can, uh, you know, we do this all the time with, uh, uh, projects and tech stop projects, where we have the cost accounting for different elements. So, uh, we'll have no problem in, uh, separating out the different costs. And, um, the, as I mentioned, the, uh, animal shelter, that's bond issues, the only item in the funding sources, uh, that's not from the bond issues. We, uh, council approved the, uh, preliminary engineering before it went to the voters, that's what that hundred and fifty is for the certificates of obligation, otherwise it's all, all GO. And then, uh, as was said, the fire station four will be the certificates of obligation. So, uh, last note, uh, again, very pleased that even at this early juncture, uh, project budgets are both very good for both these, looking to come in under. Once we get Jurotech alongside, uh, we're optimistic that we'll be able to, uh, strengthen that even better. But, uh, right now, they're, uh, a million six, um, and, uh, uh, two million, I think, I think, oh, two point four million, uh, on the animal shelter underneath, uh, the budget already. So, uh, that's another good, good piece to all this. So, nothing to add, Mayor?
Council, have you a question or comment based on staff report?
Uh, yes, Mayor, got a, um, got a few.
Who is this?
Uh, got a few comments. One, uh, I appreciate the, uh, conversation earlier and, uh, providing the, uh, uh, the delineation between the funding mechanisms. Um, I know that, uh, the animal shelter, uh, because of the price tag, it being so preliminary, when we went into bond, uh, was, uh, was relatively high, uh, and, uh, we had some bush packings and citizens that were concerned about that. Um, I know at least me and, and a few other council members, uh, promised to keep a close eye on it. Um, so being able to separate the, the projects and the funding mechanisms is important. Um, my guidance would be, um, if, uh, if it be the will of the rest of the council, from here, if we get, assuming this gets approved, uh, we allow, um, Jurotech to take the, um, uh, the CMAR project up to, to get the, the CMAR prices for both of the projects. I agree with the approach and having the same contractor work on both, it, it will make everybody's lives, uh, easier, uh, so we don't have, um, any issues, uh, with, uh, two contractors back and, uh, going back and forth stating the other task problem. Um, but, uh, from here, I'd like to make some clear delineations between what is being allocated, uh, through COs for fire station four and then what is being, um, allocated as GOs for, uh, the animal shelter. Um, and try not to have any, any more joint, uh, approvals. Uh, that way we can, uh, we can manage and report easily where, um, uh, where we have concerns, maybe with one project, without interfering with the other. Um, I know personally, if it were me coming up with a delineation, I'd take the shared drive and put it in with the animal shelter, uh, and then the, uh, the parking, uh, the head-in parking that's on the east side of the fire station, uh, that's shown on site plan, uh, page one seventeen of our packet, um, uh, include that with the fire station. Uh, but I'm sure staff can come up with a, um, uh, knows the project better and come up with better delineators, uh, than I can just by viewing a, uh, schematic site plan. But I would say, you know, from here on out, I know, again, at least I as a council member and I know others have been asked, um, so, uh, requested that we keep a close eye on the animal shelter budget. Um, I'd like to try and keep that value down, um, a- as low as we possibly can, possibly. If, if possible, I know it's two different markets, two different times, uh, you know, not, uh, not get a- as close to the thirteen million that was in the bond package. Um, uh, to get as far away from that as we can. Um, but, uh, other than that, other than future planning or, um, uh, future approvals, uh, I'm okay with, uh, this allocation at this time.
Any other council question or comment?
Hi, Mayor, this is Woody.
On that?
As we go through here on some of those, I know the old fire station number four being set right beside it. What are the plans for that and where's the money coming from when we redo that fire station or whatever?
So as we said, uh, the reuse for that building would be to, uh, uh, have our future police, we talked about that in February, early budget input, uh, is to over time transition and build a, uh, a, a police academy, train, uh, training facilities, uh, classrooms. Uh, so that'll be in the future, uh, your next CIP, uh, but that's a future project. So we can use some things and maybe use it for some purposes in the interim, just, uh, on our own, but, uh, nothing major until we can get, uh, a better scope of that.
Okay. I know this is going through this, uh, five hundred and thirty-nine pages, uh, on there. But anyway, uh, I guess it's on page twenty-one, it's talking about the animal shelter and some of the traffic circles and things of that nature and what was proposed in the beginning and, and what it shows now is a tremendous difference in the price. And I was wondering how, how they got to that, uh, uh, to that level.
I'm sorry, which page, what, twenty-one is one sixteen?
I think it's twenty-one, uh, going through there.
Page sixteen, I'm looking at one sixteen as, uh, like a contract page, so you have to tell me all that.
Well, we had one of, uh, one twenty and twenty-four, one twenty. And twenty-five, one twenty.
Trent, do you see what he's looking at at all?
Well, that's the bad thing about doing this on video, 'cause usually we go through the presentations and we'll see those, uh, things that's been talked about, but we can't do it on this.
I agree. Is, is, all I see on page twenty-one is probably the contract, is there a different page?
And more right, Member Owens, I mean, we wouldn't do this thing different if it was live, but, I mean, the contract...
Yeah.
They're all numbered, uh, uh, one sixteen in this package, are we gonna keep like a page X of one sixteen?
Let me see if I can put it on my phone. So, Member Owens, I believe the question was, you know, has anything changed from the early estimates that we put together for the bond package in today? And of course, the bond package was really done on preliminary, uh, uh, programming for the building and a, uh, cost per square foot basis based on the market and then, uh, considering, uh, some adds for, um, inflation. And since then, we've actually designed, started designing the building, gone back through programming, optimized the building, uh, made some tweaks and changes here and there and, uh, and, and had a more efficient building. And so some of that has led to the, the, the cost where we are today. Um, and we'll, you know, continue to move forward with the, with CMAR, um, uh, assuming we move forward tonight, we'll move forward with CMAR to continue to optimize the building and make sure that we bring in, uh, more on the budget.
Yeah, there's some several, um, the prices are tremendously different than, uh, than what they were in the beginning on there. And I was just wondering what, what had been done to get those prices to that level. And it also reflects a little bit of the bond sell, too, uh, of, uh, doing that, which comes up later as we go down through here. So, that's what I was wondering, you know, how, how we get to that point on there, of the reduction on. But it sounds like it's a lot different in the prices of what they were first told us to, you know, and, uh, and what they are now.
Yes, sir, I don't know that we, you know, we changed significantly in the cost per square foot price, uh, but, you know, that's changed some and, and we've also worked on the building to make sure it's an efficient building and, and his, uh, size is, uh, appropriately as it needs to be. And, uh, as part of the process is we walk through the design to make sure that we build these buildings efficiently and, and bring them in under budget.
Yeah.
So the, the first thing would be that the scope and the, the, what was envisioned for the space is essentially the same. So, uh, the, the scope, they corrected from wrong, Trent, still providing the same essential, uh, uh, spaces for the animals, for the, uh, uh, bins, what are the, uh...
Yes, sir, number, number of kennels for, uh, dogs and, and number of, uh, cat, uh, locations, I believe, has stayed the same. The building and its essential function, we still are able to do everything originally envisioned there and scope for the project. It's just we've been able to make the building a little more efficient.
Okay.
Yeah, question or comment by council?
Uh, yeah, a couple of other things that, um, uh, that I, um, I, I thought of while, uh, Member Woody was, uh, speaking. Um, and just maybe points of clarification, um, so the CMR, uh, the CMR that we're gonna get from Jurotech, uh, but, um, and I apologize to the packet, I didn't, I don't want to cause any of that, about how long do you think we're gonna, till, till we see the value of CMR, uh, for each of those projects?
So, for some, uh, August, September kind of timeframe, is that right, Trent?
Yes, I think, you know, we're gonna get our first, uh, shot at looking at, uh, cost estimates in, uh, in just, uh, probably the next, uh, three to four weeks as we, as they take up, get, get in-depth into the design, the, the design as it exists today. And that's when we'll start getting feedback from the C, uh, CMAR as far as constructability reviews, um, you know, if they've got any, uh, recommendations on material or how something's put together that has some cost savings and we'll work through that process, uh, through the rest of the summer and through ninety percent plans, all the way to a hundred percent plans. Um, and, uh, around the ninety percent plans, which we expect September timeframe, we will be ready to bring back the guaranteed maximum price, uh, for each of these buildings, uh, back, backing from council for, uh, approval. And, and at that point, they will also be approving the general conditions and the, uh, the overhead and profit, uh, uh, percentages, um, that, that they propose. So this, this really just awards the pre-construction services and it establishes, you know, what the, the profit and overhead percentages are as well as the, the amount of the GCS. Uh, but those actually come back with the guaranteed maximum price for everyone. To see all these again before we actually award in the construction.
Okay, and we're, we're at the fifty percent or sixty percent milestone on the, on the design of both projects?
Yes, sir, I think... Yes, sir, I think ballpark for, yeah, sixty percent range.
Okay, um, look, I, I know you're gonna do this already, uh, but just maybe to reiterate, uh, if we can get, um, when, when the C M R comes out, uh, you know, if we can get a Thursday packet that spells out the C M R particularly on, um, the animal shelter, uh, far in advance of any, uh, um, uh, any vote needing to happen in order to keep the project on path and, and let's still be able to have, uh, uh, timely approval to be able to take, uh, take advantage of the hungry market. But to allow council to take a look at where the price is and give us plenty of time to potentially give y'all feedback if we want to back the price down for whatever reason, so there's still time in the design, uh, there's still time in the, in the initial C M R to make any adjustment if it ends up coming to the value that, um, theoretically council may not, uh, wanna spend. Um, you know, I know that's, uh, that's fairly abstract, but just given the attention that this, this, and subsequently had since the bond, I think we owe to the people who voted against it, uh, which was, uh, a substantial portion of the voting population and the people who continue to have concerns, uh, for us as council to maintain a close eye on that project. Uh, with respect to fire station four, um, can you, uh, help me to understand what, what's the sequencing with respect to, uh, construction and occup, uh, getting the strip of occupancy for, uh, new fire station four and then what, what happens to the old fire station four in the interim?
So nothing happens to the department until we reoccupy. Once the fire department goes in the new station, uh, you know, then there's possibility of, uh, using that space for, you know, some, um, practices or drills with, uh, uh, police training that, and, uh, that, that'd be the only sequence.
Okay, so, until we've done, uh, done some sort of allocation to, uh, or to repurpose the facility for any future use, potentially a, uh, uh, a police academy, it's, it, we're not gonna have any use for that building, so there's nothing, there's not gonna be any relevant costs to, uh, to do anything in the interim for the project for it to have some sort of interim use, correct?
We'll, we'll use it, I mean, it's a building that, uh, can still have, I mean, I'm just saying, uh, whatever works done there can be, to be done with their own forces or minor or, uh, you know, just to be able to retrofit it a little bit till we decide to move over time into a, a full-blown academy training area.
I guess, maybe to be more direct, we have no plans to rehab that building until we have a definitive use program, correct?
We're not gonna do any substantive rehab, I mean, we're gonna talk, hopefully, maybe in a couple of weeks when we do the C I P meeting about what that looks like and timing and all that.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can just address the comments on the, uh, animal shelter and the cost and moving forward. So our expectation is the things you see tonight, that, that that's where we are today and we, we're bringing in the C M R, and the expectation from that point moving forward is that this, this won't move anywhere upwards, it will stay here or move, uh, downwards. Um, and really, if we're moving from sixty percent to ninety percent, if there's any issues with where those costs are today, you know, this would be the time to add that input. Um, and we'll, you know, we'll continue to provide updates when we have additional information in our, our regular Thursday packets, um, but our expectation is that it moves down from here, um, so if it stays here or down, we'll continue to move forward, um, if, if we see anything go up, and I think that's when, when we can, you know, bring that, uh, uh, you know, where, where we go from here, but I just wanna make sure everyone's expectations aren't that, uh, we can, you know, once we get down the road much further, there's a whole lot of changes you can make without really redesigning.
Uh, fair enough, I mean, if you, if we wanna e- entertain that conversation now, I know that what, what was, uh, what was budgeted in the, uh, in the bond package was, uh, thirteen million, looks like what we've got in here is just an, uh, initial estimate. I'm assuming this is, um, uh, this initial, um, designer cost estimate is about ten-five, um, with, uh, we'll exclude F F B at six hundred thousand, um, but I, I'd personally like to see if we could, we could get that value down. Um, I know we use League City, uh, the League City Animal Shelter as a, a benchmark, uh, which came in at the, um, between seven and eight million dollar range, um, you know, if, if we're gonna get significantly over that value, just kinda understand, have a clear understanding of what, uh, what we're getting above the League City, uh, 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 above the, uh, the League City Animal Shelter that just applies the additional cost. I don't wanna get an equal building for, uh, twenty percent more, um, I mean, it's certainly a couple of years since that market bit on this, but it's not, uh, we shouldn't expect that, that's definitely a change. Um, so, uh, just my input, if, uh, no of the council members wanna try and, um, uh, try and target a lower value so that the designers can, uh, the designers in the C M R, contractors can start looking at that, uh, when they're, uh, they're doing their evaluation of the final design, uh, than how it would be, but that would be, uh, a very good question.
Any further comment for council?
No, I... I just wanna, real quick, if you don't mind, uh, we're doing the funding of the, uh, fire station number four, uh, C O's.
Yes.
Uh, eight point seven million and, uh, certificates obligation.
Uh, whatever it says there, that's what, uh, you saw in the first re, or the, uh, resolution for the certificate obligation, and we also, uh, had the C I P and the, uh, intent reimbursed, yes.
I was wondering why, since we knew that we were gonna put that out, why didn't we put that on the general obligation bond in, in, uh, post it for the, uh, going in as we did the other projects that, the major projects that we were gonna do that we had advanced notice on?
So you saw that when we, uh, we brought to you in last January, the, uh, uh, bond projects, and we discussed the, the certificate obligation and what was in bonds, and the fire station is, uh, no different than, uh, other fire stations as, uh, critical public safety buildings, and the, uh, public safety building itself, uh, the police station was all certificate of obligation for that major one. The only exception that's been recently is the, uh, uh, fire training grounds, which, uh, again, council consciously, uh, decided to put into the, uh, on question. So you could've done that last year, but that wasn't the choice that was made.
Okay, it just seems like to me, Clay, that over the last, uh, two months, uh, we've come up with a lot of money to be spent in certificates obligation and, and it's just, seems like right now it's kinda running wild.
Well, member, uh, 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 that's entirely not, uh, consistent with the facts. The, uh, everything that's been brought for us, certificate of obligation is entirely consistent with what council has seen and decided, uh, previously. There's nothing new in, in any of this.
Well, just on the water side, that's one thing I'm talking about on there, uh, how it's escalated about three hundred and thirty million to, I guess it's, well, look, depending on what page you're looking on, uh, over four hundred and seventy-two million.
As you should know, that's entirely different than certificate of obligation, uh, those are revenue bonds and, uh, those are issued, uh, for the enterprise fund, has zero to do with certificate of obligation.
Uh, some more, some more.
Not, not on the water sphere.
Okay, I think we're beating this up pretty well, I think we've got a good project going. Um, Madam Secretary, I believe we got a motion to second here, that's, that's, boom of here.
Mayor, if I may, if I may, can, can I see if I can get some other input from, uh, some other council members whose voice concerns about the, uh, the value of the animal shelter? Um, you know, I think if, if we're trying to provide guidance now at the time, if we, if, if we don't say anything now and the value comes up a little higher and we get into final design, i- it's really gonna, it's, we're gonna throw a staff or a loop if we're telling them then, uh, that we want to devalue the project.
I would say, I, I, I think I've seen an analysis of what we have versus the, the League City project, maybe that was in the Thursday packet at some point, um, maybe if, if that could be reshared and, and kind of, uh, with an executive summary as to what are the, the key differences, I, I would also be interested to see that, you know, um, this X percentage of it comes from the fact that this was a few years ago and so it's inflation, and then here are the, uh, additional services we have, uh, you know, also, of course, a metric would be o- on a per square foot basis as well, but I think, uh, I, I think, yeah, just kinda showing this is what we're getting additional would be, uh, would be, uh, analysis that'd be helpful for our decision-making.
Yes, I would also like to see, um, some cost estimate, um, lower than what is predicted, um, as we're going through the, uh, the, the process, so, um, I, I don't know if it would be beneficial if we'd get an update somewhere, but, um, I, I definitely agree with council member Perez on doing some kind of a benchmark on this so that, uh, we, we don't end up doing any cost overrun.
This is Councilman Little, I, uh, I voted against this project when we initially looked at it. Uh, if I'm gonna remember my numbers correctly, it was six hundred and thirty-seven dollars a square foot, and I did a little research and found out there the cost of building a hospital was around two hundred and fifty feet, two hundred and fifty dollars per square foot, so, uh, I never had a satisfactory answer to why it was so high, uh, so anything we can do to get that down to something that's a little more reasonable, I, I'm all, I'm all for. And, uh, you know, if we have to look at it on a, a regular basis, on one basis, then I think we should, we owe that to the citizens. Uh, as Councilman Perez stated, there's been a lot of, um, citizens complaining about the cost of this thing and, and that it's not necessary, so let's keep a close eye on it. All that, Mayor.
Mayor, I, I, I would agree, uh, that I'd like to see something coming south of the, the nine point one that's budgeted now, I, I guess my, my concern is, you know, at the, on the, after we vote on this, this, can, can we give staff some kind of guidance or, I mean, I, I count to more than four of us say, let's cut it, are we talking cutting a hundred thousand, are we talking cut it a million? Uh, I mean, do we have any, any direction to, to give to staff to, to quantify how much lower we want this?
Um, could I, could I take a stab and say, let's quantify, uh, in the C M R process, let's quantify base bid, I'd say, you know, in the, in the eight million dollar range, uh, not a hard number, but in that range, uh, a level of service that we get at eight million, and then let's quantify, um, add-ons to nine and ten and then ten and a half, um, including F F B, um, so that we get full value, and that way when we get to, uh, that, that gives the design team at this point some understanding of what they can potentially deal off and not deal off, of what we can vote for and against, uh, without derailing the project and derailing, derailing the contractor, and it gives us all an opportunity to say, if, if we make this decision, this is what we are excluding, and this is a level of service for which we will not receive. It also gives the, the design team an opportunity to say, um, we can exclude these areas and they're easily expandable in the future if we decide for a future allocation. Um, Trent, I know I'm vastly over simplifying that by, uh, kind of back to design and the values, but, um, I know, uh, it, it paints you a little bit into a, a tighter corner than you would, uh, otherwise be, and I, and I'm appreciative of that, but do you think we could, we could come up with a, uh, a, um, a budgeting process as we enter into C M R at this phase in the design that could, could fall within those ranges?
So, I, yeah, I think what we can do moving forward is, as we approach sixty percent design, which will be fairly soon, and we get our first, uh, putting the plans as they are out to the market to see where we stand at that point, um, if we're, if we're not coming off the numbers we've seen so far and coming down from there, that'll be, you know, the time to, to say, okay, we've got to, you know, we've gotta look at, um, you know, uh, what, what are the things that, you know, can be optional or something that we could, uh, you know, they're not really optional long-term, but something that can be, uh, could be added, um, we can look at that at that point, and, uh, you know, it, you know, I think, I think what'll tell the tale is, we'll, we get a few, few weeks down the road and we get our first number from the market and, and we go from there, and, uh, the first look at, uh, through the plans of our, of our C M R and they get a chance to go through and look at it from a value engineering standpoint, then we'll have a much better idea where we stand.
Okay, so do you want to, you wanna postpone, um, any kind of final decision as where, when we proceed in C M R until you get some pricing back and can make some determination of where the, um, uh, the add-alts lines can be drawn?
Uh, no, we gotta proceed with the C M R contract for the pre-construction services so we can get those numbers.
Yeah, but if we could do C M R, if we could do C M R now, get an overall price, but start, uh, start getting some assessment of where's the arbitrary, and, and some relatively arbitrary values can be, uh, drawn with add, um, uh, add-alts, uh, delineations and come back and, um, you know, possibly ask, we either do a workshop or a resolution, have ca- uh, council sign off on the direction and move forward, but not necessarily derail the project schedule. Um, it, you, you feel like there's, there's an intermittent step that we need to take and make sure that all council is hot off on the, the project scope and the pricing?
Uh, yeah, I think as we move forward with the C M R and we see where the numbers are, I think we've heard, heard, you know, what, what, um, the desire of council is tonight, and if it's not headed in that direction, that's when we need to, you know, bring it back to you guys. We'll provide you, you know, the numbers as we see them moving along, I mean, if, if we have concerns with that, we'll bring it back, and if the council has concerns with what we're sharing with them, we can always have those discussions at that point. I think, you know, yeah, let, let's, let's see where we stand right now and, and see where, you know, where, where it goes, uh, with, with the first look at the numbers.
Okay, oh, just to reiterate, my personal value, my personal, uh, request is that we draw it at eight, nine, and then full price. Um, if we can get that direction now, I think that'd be great, if you need some intermittent, uh, intermittent step, I'm, I'm supportive of that, um, and hopefully, um, I just don't wanna tie things up because I know we're gonna take advantage of the hungry market right now and I don't wanna delay this project so that we, we lose that advantage, uh, but not lose cost, but not lose sight of the fact that we still have some citizens concerned that we need to address.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Trent. Appreciate you.
I'd like your council conclusion there.
Mayor, this is, uh, member Hernandez, I just, I had some technical difficulties, but I just wanted to say that I, I'm in accordance with the member Perez and, uh, a couple of the council members that I heard before I dropped off, I'd like to see where we can take this as far as any cost savings go, thank you.
Madam Secretary, I think we've, we've worked this to the point where we may have sort of a motion to second on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Please repeat, Councilmember Perez?
Uh, aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
The motion, time, seven to zero.
Okay, moving to item number two.
She uses the base case plus a spread for each maturity depending on the credit rating, the market conditions and so forth, so the, the rate you're seeing on the, the page four is one point eight-five for three years.
So they get them started.
Please mute, John.
Everybody new here? [laughing] Councilmember Little, you're gonna be doing item number two.
Thank you, Mayor, consideration of possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number one five eight eight, the move.
Second, this is Moore.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, this is the, uh, second reading for the ordinance on our water and sewer revenue bonds, uh, Mr. McCarter has a brief presentation just to recap on this.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson, um, good evening, Mayor and Council, John McCarter here, um, happy to present the, uh, second and final reading for our, uh, two items that we have on the agenda for tonight, um, so item number two, we'll start with, uh, second reading, reading of ordinance fifteen eighty-eight, so the water and sewer revenue bonds, um, just a brief overview, we'll walk through the staff presentation, we'll hand it over to, um, Mr. Robach, um, to do his presentation as the city's financial advisor, uh, then we'll open it up for city council discussion in action, uh, then we will go through item number three, which is the second reading of ordinance fifteen ninety, uh, that's the G O bonds, uh, we'll do our, our short staff presentation, Mr. Robach will, uh, walk us through his presentation, uh, then we'll have council action, um, after that. Um, looking at the, uh, the background of how we got here today, um, issuance of debt is an annual process that we conduct, um, this time of year, every year, um, this is to support our C I P, which is adopted by council last August. Um, as you can see here, it's a culmination of many steps. That CIT was first presented in July two thousand and nineteen, adopted in August, um, and then formally adopted, um, as a part of the annual budget in September. Um, on October fourteenth, we adopted intent to reimburse, which is the mechanism by which council authorized work to begin on these, uh, projects before the issuance actually occurs. I'll put forth a Thursday packet outlining the items here tonight on May seventh, conducting the first readings of these two items, um, plus authorize, uh, notices of intent for the certificates of obligation, uh, on day eighteen. Um, and now we're, uh, we're back here tonight, June eighth, and second reading. Uh, I will note, some of you may be wondering where these certificates of obligation are. Those follow a separate process. So following the meeting on the eighteenth, we did go ahead and publish intent, um, the notices of intent, rather, um, in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks. Mr. Robach will cover some of those next steps, but those are not on the agenda for tonight. Uh, again, that's pursuant with, uh, the, the processes we have to follow, uh, for those issuers. So brief overview on, uh, twenty twenty B, our revenue bond sale, this has been to item number two. Um, this is all water and sewer revenue bonds, and this is secured by the, um, net revenues from our enterprise fund, um, and backed by those mechanisms, uh, to be paid off. Um, here you see a list of all the projects here. Um, the intent to reimburse, uh, authorized forty-six point five million dollars in total expenditures. Uh, this amount to be sold is about eight point three. Uh, that significant drop-off is really due to changes in project schedules, uh, which, which projects were pushed back. I will also note that all the projects listed here tonight are included or were included, and then intent to reimburse, that was, uh, approved last October. Uh, with that, I'm gonna hand it over to, uh, Mr. John Robach to walk us through the, uh, the, uh, portion of this presentation.
Uh, there's not really much change in the presentation that we're presenting tonight except for the market. Um, the, the, the bond buyer index, um, on page one, actually rates are a little bit lower than were shown here by about twenty basis points. So we've actually since the last meeting hit all-time lows on the bond buyer index. As a result, uh, we believe that by the time we sell bonds, we'll be a, a very favorable interest environment to lock in a low interest rate. Uh, given that, um, on page two, this estimated debt service requirements, again, these are same rates, the same assumptions you made in the last meeting. Given the market did not move on a daily basis, we, we wanna be conservative what we're presenting to you guys. But the water and sewer system bonds, the series twenty twenty B, will generate, uh, eight million three hundred and eighty-one thousand to the city at closing. And then on page three is the estimated source uses of funds, again, based on the market, we believe will be selling bonds at premium. So we'll sell less principal amount, the tune of seven million three hundred and twenty-five thousand, generate the eight million three hundred and eighty-one thousand proceeds. We believe the all costing rate would be approximately at two point seven six percent. And then on the last two pages, uh, this, ten of scheduled events for the proposed bond sales. Uh, we're actually on the last page. We've already gone through, uh, the first phase of events. Uh, the bottom, page five, is, uh, Monday, June eighth. That's where we are today, asking you to, uh, uh, can approve the ordinance for the water and sewer. We'll also ask you to approve the ordinance for the permanent improvement bonds, series twenty twenty, on the next-gen item. Uh, rating calls are in the process of being scheduled for the week of June twenty-second. And then we'll come back to you all on July thirteenth and, um, present this results and ask for your approval on the bond sales. And then the bond approval will close the bond a month later on August eleventh. And that's going to be a huge incentive to, uh, work with projects and reimburse themselves for these established resolutions that outstanding. Uh, with that, I'll be happy to see questions on the water and sewer bond issue, or the timing of this.
I think we'll hand it back to Mr. Pearson for, uh, council consideration.
Uh, nothing to add, uh, Mayor Council. As you saw, we've seen this at the pre-reading, and, uh, as that slides show, this is just the latest in a number of, uh, steps leading up to this, so, uh, shouldn't be, uh, there, there's no surprise that it's been here. So nothing to answer.
I've got some questions where it's, uh, we have on, uh, page fourteen to one twenty, we show the bond program going out to twenty fifty, or four hundred and twenty-eight million. And then if you go further down, uh, permanent improvement bond is showing twenty forty at four hundred and forty-four million. And, uh, then the water and sewer bonds shows four hundred and thirty-one million, and the payoff, uh, actually twenty fifty. Why are these different?
So you're, so you start off page one fourteen of one twenty?
No, fourteen of one twenty.
Fourteen of one twenty.
Fourteen of one twenty, it shows a year on there, twenty fifty, and the amount, uh, of debt on bond interest, four hundred and twenty-eight million. And then if you go, uh, down further, you'll see one that says, uh, twenty forty. See on, on this one's, uh, four twenty-eight, water and sewer system bonds. And it goes to.
I think the question is, why are the two, um, the, the settlements structured with different maturities? And I think they might have to have Mr. Robach into that question, Paul.
Member Owens, uh, John Robach again. The difference is, on the water and sewer, I believe on one of Texas, it's actually, I think it's Texas Water and Water Board, uh, transaction, we actually structured those for thirty years to match the life of, of the plant that was being built. Uh, the general obligation debt, we have traditionally done level principle over a twenty-year debt period. Um, and, and that goes for the water and sewer system also, just on the Texas Water and Water Board transaction, because the rates are favorable and because we're trying to stretch out the cost to repay that with the users over a thirty-year period, uh, that, that is why the water and sewer goes up to twenty fifty and the general obligation debt goes up to twenty forty.
Okay, and when you go, you know, the others, when you go further down, you'll see it in there, uh, another list of the numbers on there. And it shows twenty forty, uh, as that date, and it shows four hundred and forty-four million.
Right. I, I, and Councilmember, th, those are different pledges. One is water and sewer revenue bonds. These are the bonds that are issued and paid for by the revenue system, or system revenues from the water sewer system. And then the one that goes up to twenty forty, that's your all the patient debt. That is, that is debt that's paid for with abhorrent taxes or property taxes.
So that's, that's in addition. So you got one twenty-eight plus, uh, four forty-one?
Yes.
Their payoff.
I believe, I believe, if you're, if you're talking about the two different, the numbers that are, what, uh, four hundred and twenty-eight plus four hundred and forty-four, yes, this, this is two different, two different types of debt.
Okay, and then as you go down further, on down, you have, uh, permanent improvement bonds, which is a higher amount. Is it right here?
Uh, I, I, I'm not, I guess I'm not seeing the second, uh, numbers you're talking about. The only numbers I've seen are of the public sale per, uh, water sewer, which totaled in twenty fifty, uh, four hundred and twenty-eight million, then.
That's four twenty-eight. Now if you go down to the next one, the permanent improvement bonds.
Right. That, that is general obligation debt. That's voted debt paid for by abhorrent taxes, and that totals in twenty forty at four hundred and forty-four million. Yes, sir.
And you know, the other night when we talked about it, or, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, was talking about the bonds, four hundred and seventeen million on there, and it jumped up to, uh, uh, four hundred and seventy-four million. That's what it showed at that point. I'm just gonna remind so many different ones.
I bet, I bet that includes the, the certificate obligation, that, uh, the, the two series, certificate obligation rate. I must.
I guess I'm getting confused of why so many areas there with different rates and, and different amounts. And are those a total in each one of them that's gonna be sold, or?
For, for these two, yes, sir. Yes, sir. For the water and sewer, we're selling seven million three hundred and twenty-five million, seven, seven million three hundred and twenty-five thousand for the water and sewer. And we add layer that into your existing debt, the principal and interest for the water sewer, based on estimated interest rates, the total of four hundred and twenty-eight million, that's all said and done, total debt service requirements. With your existing plus your new.
Uh, just, it shows that, uh, different one on the COs, uh, when it's to, uh, total debt service.
What was it again, John?
The COs are a different pledge. They're not water sewer related. They're paid with abhorrent taxes.
Or set, what, set total debt service on there.
If y'all go to page thirty-one of one twenty, it'll outline the permanent improvement bonds where we layer on the twenty twenty series. And then you go to page thirty-three of one twenty, and it layers on the COs after the permanent improvement. And that's how you get from the, the four twenty all the way up to the four seventy-two.
Okay, thank you.
But again, both of those are, are the, uh, the different issues, not, not the enterprise, not water and sewer.
Yeah, the item number three, of the next item.
Yeah, that'll be the next item, Mayor.
Okay, so the certificates of obligation that's paid off by, uh, the tax rate.
Yes, sir. That's correct. Yes, sir.
And the others, it says, sale of water.
Yes, sir.
I guess what I'm asking in Clay, this is a, a question for you, what, what is the total, um, we've done a stock check on this, what is the total bond indebtedness that we have as a city in all bonds? Uh, whether it's general funds, whether it's revenue bonds, or where it's, uh, water wastewater enterprise fund?
I mean, that's all reported in the, uh, various, the CAPFER that, uh, you just saw three months ago, and the, uh, budget documents, we recap as well. So I'll be happy to copy and paste those, pick those pages to you.
Yeah, okay, that, that just seems like that we're, we're getting really indebted. For that reason, I, I won't be able, be able to vote on this tonight, or.
Have a comment after this, Paul?
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilor, any questions? Comment farther on this item? There you go, Madam Secretary, I believe we, most, uh, most of second on the floor.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember, uh, Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
No.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
The motion passes six to one to approve the second and final reading of ordinance number fifteen eighty-eight.
You finished item number three. Councilmember Hernandez, uh, you've been pretty quiet. I want you to move aside.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of Possible Action, second and final reading of ordinance number one five nine zero. So move.
Second, more.
Motion second on the floor. Staff report.
So Mayor Council, uh, separate from the, uh, water and sewer enterprise fund, we also have, uh, general, uh, abhorrent, uh, projects that are backed by abhorrent property taxes, um, and this is the, uh, second reading for, for that series. And, uh, likewise, Mr. McCarter will introduce the projects that are, uh, done here, and the timelines, and the prior actions, and the, uh, what we're funding here.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Um, Mayor Council, as Mr. Pearson stated, this is agenda item number three, second final reading, uh, ordinance fifteen ninety, that's general obligation bond component, um, of that abhorrent tax issuance to this quarter. Um, looking at the bond type, um, this is the reading for general obligation bonds. Always there's some discussion about the certificate obligation on the last item. Um, just to clarify, that's not on the agenda tonight. Um, the law requires that it's all a separate procedure, so those are not here for consideration. This is only the, uh, the GO bonds, so these are the voted, uh, bond election approvals and voter electing approved bonds is secured by property taxes, uh, required by law, have a levy, uh, to levy a tax to, uh, to pay for the bonds that are being issued. Um, looking at the projects themselves here, um, you can see that, again, all these included here were on the intent to reimburse. Um, wanna point out that the, uh, top three projects here, uh, the two thousand and seven bond, all, uh, leveraged outside funding, um, in, in accomplishing these projects, lowering the cost to the city, uh, so basically to, uh, the engineering staff, uh, for securing that. Um, sort of the, um, the, the component here is really two pieces, one, the two thousand and seven, um, bonds, we have a total of seven point eight being sold tonight. Uh, the whole issuance was one hundred and sixty-two million dollars, and after tonight, uh, we will have ten million unissued remaining. Looking at the second component, the two thousand and nineteen, uh, general obligation bonds, uh, that's totaling, uh, ten point four million being issued here tonight. Um, seventy-nine million was the total package there. We'll have sixty-nine million remaining, um, to be issued after that. Um, so the total being issued or authorized tonight would be eighteen point two million, uh, for all of these projects. I'll hand it over to Mr. Robach.
Mr. McCarter, uh, a, again, very similar presentation than the one we gave at the last council main, uh, meeting. Again, as Mr. McCarter pointed out, this is only covering the permanent improvement bonds that were voted authorized, uh, debt next for projects that voters voted on, uh, back in two thousand and seven, again, back between like ten. Uh, on the second page, bond buyer index, I spoke earlier, rates are in a worst load, right at worst loads right now. Again, GO index is at a, a two seventeen right now. Um, we turned this presentation in, uh, about a week after this, so rates have moved lower since then. Uh, again, great, great time to sell bonds. On page two is the estimated debt service requirement. Um, we talked about this a little earlier, but this is against the permanent improvement bonds. Uh, sixteen million four hundred and twenty thousand in principal amount being issued, um, over the twenty years with a level principal structure, you know, generate eighteen million two hundred and seventy-seven thousand proceeds to the city. Uh, page three is the estimated source uses. Again, like on the water and sewer, we're, we're seeing a market that is demanding premium, where investors are paying more than the par amount for the bonds, which allows us to reduce the par amount of the bonds from the eighteen million down to sixteen million four twenty. And, uh, with all, if we all cost it straight on this, we believe to be around three percent. And then again, just similar to the water and sewer bond issue, uh, on the schedule events, we've gone through the first page, second page. Uh, very top, we are here tonight for the second reading of ordinance. Our rating calls are being scheduled for the week of the twenty-second. Uh, bond sale results will be presented and approved on July thirteenth, and then we'll close on August eleventh, at which point the city will receive the funds for all four bond issues, permanent improvement, water and sewer, and also the two CO issues. Without any questions you have on the structure or the timing, or, um, what we're asking you to approve tonight?
We'll hand it back to Mr. Pearson for, uh, input, discussion, and action.
So again, uh, the timeline's been provided of, uh, council prior actions leading to this. Uh, we need to issue this, uh, this financing, um, in order to, uh, pay for the projects that have already been started and committed to. Uh, we, uh, are ready to do that, as was mentioned, the rates are extremely favorable for the, the city to, uh, begin forward on this, and, uh, nothing to add on that.
Councilor, any question?
Thank you, Mayor, uh.
Any other question, comment, or tell?
Yeah, Mayor. On the, uh, June twenty-second, the rating agency called, uh, is there a reporting mechanism to get us comments that come back potentially from the, the various agencies?
Can you answer that? Sorry.
Good job, please.
Yeah, uh, Councilmember, uh, we, there are, there are actually, after the, after the calls we have ready companies, they actually produce their rating report that is for, uh, the public to view. Um, after every time we sell bonds, uh, there are two rating reports, one from S and P and one from Fitch. Uh, actually, Moody's Fitch, excuse me, S and P, Moody's Fitch, and it provides the detail of the rating and how they came to the rating that they gave to the city. Um, currently, the, the city's general obligation or permanent improvement of the CO debt have a rating of double A two, double A, which is just two notches below the highest rating you possibly have. Water and sewer, just because the nature of the revenue pledge, has one notch lower, it's double A three, double A minus. So both ratings are, are, are great, and we'll have those reports probably about a week before we pass the bonds, which we can distribute to Clay, uh, and Mr. Pearson can distribute to the council. So both ratings are great and we'll have those reports probably about a week before we pass the bonds, which we can distribute to Clay and Mr. Pearson can distribute to the council. That's what you like.
So any comments that are made on the call are documented in their reports?
Well, yes, it's in conjunction with their background work they do with the audits, the budgets, and just the economic climate around Pearland, around Texas, United States. Obviously, with COVID nineteen going on, what then in fact we have. It's a big framework they work within to get the rate. It's not just how much debt you have seen, which is, the debt outstanding is a part of it. It's how you repay your debt, but there's other pieces to it, you know, the medium wealth of the city, the open liability. It's all, there's a lot of different factors that go into that rate.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question or comment from council? Madam Secretary, I think we've got a motion second on, we're waiting there.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
No.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
The motion passes six to one to approve the second and final reading of ordinance number fifteen ninety.
Okay, moving on to item number four, this is going to call on Clay to share this with us.
Thank you, Mayor. So the next items are somewhat related, but I need to say on their own. I mean, if we could, we'll deal with first this item number four, and this is where we'd like to have some council input and discussion. We want to build a recovery plan specific for COVID nineteen. We believe that having our goals and strategies, if you will, would serve us well as we get into specifics of, there's a wide variety of grants and federal monies that are going to be, that are here and are going to be coming through. So we think that having a recovery plan would be useful for us, is attached stone, to guide the actions and the investments. We also see that we need to have a recovery plan, which isn't probably clear in our existing emergency operations plan. And so there's a generic piece of this too, but relative to the COVID, that's what I think most of the discussion will be. So if I could, I'll turn to Mr. Hardy and he'll go through a brief presentation, but this is seeking your thoughts and input on the broad recovery plan that he's drafted here. Take it away, Joel.
Thank you, Clay. Just waiting for I to do up the slides, but just to kind of recap your thoughts. You know, we think the city should have an overarching recovery plan in place when responding to or coming out of the response for disasters. With ICH and Harvey, for example, we really didn't have those kinds of parameters in place. And I think we may have missed some opportunities to help the community in certain ways. There may have not been the funding in place to do so, but I think that the reality of new perspectives about disaster recovery suggests that those funding sources are going to be available. And certainly with COVID nineteen, there are a lot of them through the stimulus program that's been issued with the U.S. Treasury. So our hope is that we can develop the umbrella, if you will, and ongoing efforts to have some plan essentials in place so that when we do come out of a disaster, whatever it may be, that we can have some of those in place and understand how to navigate through the process of bringing our community back to whole. I will say this is a draft and it's a heavy draft, but we're going to be working in perspective for the next few days following some of your input and discussion. And I also want to guide us away from getting too much into the CARES Act application specifics because we're going to be covering that in agenda item number five in more detail. So if you can bear with us, we just want to kind of get the bigger pieces dealt with as well. So next slide. So we've got two purposes of wanting to do this, and you know, we want to have a practical approach to responding, recovering actually from the pandemic disaster, response to COVID nineteen. But we also want this to kind of be the onset for developing an ongoing disaster recovery planning. Next slide, if you will, there are some important assumptions that we have to consider that are kind of putting us in a position. One is that we believe that, and our emergency manager has had ongoing discussions with staff through some of his experiences working at the national level with FEMA and his expertise, is that at some point FEMA will begin to require that we have some form of plan elements in place to qualify for public assistance in the aftermath of a disaster. Right now, that's not the case. It is the case when we start talking about hazard mitigation and our flood prevention and drainage improvement projects that go through the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. We have to have an active and adopted hazard mitigation plan, but the recovery element is not a requirement in so much as our public assistance program elements. The money that we get back from FEMA when we apply for public assistance for our emergency protective measures, debris removal, and those kinds of things, that hasn't been a requirement. But it soon will be, and we want to make sure we have something in place in the form of a document that helps us. And there are some economic development concerns that are real and valid for our community, who want to know how to respond and recover where those are concerned. And these are not things that we can or typically budget for. Most cities do not budget for disaster assistance or disaster response or recovery because we just don't know when and if one of these things will hit. So it's been our practice in line with the way most cities operate, most counties, and even the state, that those kinds of funds come out of a federal registered notice when a disaster proclamation is issued by the federal government. We also know that we've got some long-term resilience concerns from prior disasters that are continuing to affect the community. And we want to make sure that this pandemic isn't one that stands on top of those from the past. The good news is, I think, our observations of the community show that we've got a pretty resilient socioeconomic demographic. We respond fairly well to positive recovery effort. And if we look at the data that comes out of our current response and certain things that are dealing with with regard to COVID nineteen, we're finding that our local resiliency is pretty sharp. So we feel that the thing that we are proposing to do, in any case, will help us down the road. Next slide. So in the plan, we talk about some important priorities, of course, being restoring local government programs and services, reopening of our facilities. We want to make sure that not just along the lines of our continuity of operations and providing bare bones services throughout the response to a pandemic, we want to make sure that when we start to reopen and, you know, get back to business, that the citizens can rely on our services. And some of those priorities are important for us to address. We want to make sure that we are accessing the funding that's out there for economic stimulus programs. A lot of times, those are difficult to acquire, but we're going to have to put forth our best efforts to attract those kinds of dollars in the form of the disaster recovery program you need to implement. We're learning through the COVID response that our ability and capacity for activating and sustaining emergency management and incident command structures has greatly improved. And I think if we can add to that by having some type of ongoing effort to perfect those, this event, as well as the Floyd burial, the potential for a hurricane this weekend, all of those have had the attention of the incident command structure, and it seems to be working very well. We want to make sure that that's a structure that can sustain the recovery process. And in this event, we have asked that a uniform incident command structure be sustained. And we do have leadership in the process that would take place at the onset of our response to continue through recovery. Some other priorities include making sure that we've got necessary resources in the community where childcare, re-increments of the workforce, workforce development, restoration of academic operations, and job creation and retention are concerned. There are resources being allocated for those concerns, and not just through the CARES Act, but other stimulus funds that are available through the Economic Development Administration and other funding sources, as well as CDBG and the Department of Justice. We want to make sure we're taking advantage of all of those and helping where we can. We also want to, as we discussed earlier tonight, make sure there's resource allocation placed for social services programs. The community nonprofits are important to our local sustainability, and we want to make sure that those agencies have the resources they need to do the things that they traditionally do when helping the community. Another set of priorities include updating hazard mitigation plans and some of our community development priorities. When it comes to disaster recovery after a flood event, for example, we want to make sure that all those principles are highly maintained and that we've got the right set of parameters in place for responding to the damage that occurs after a flood or a storm. We also want to make sure that we are developing and implementing increased capacity for local public health and epidemiology. One thing that we found with coronavirus was that our ability to rely on external sources for information, activation of public health strategies, and just, you know, really, really being at the cusp of the most important information in real time, we struggle there. And we believe we need to have some local resources in place that allow us to act a little bit more expeditionally when it comes to those kinds of concerns. Next slide. So generally speaking, the recommendations are to, you know, of course, the things that we've done, have a phased reopening of local businesses. We have also demobilized the response structure of the incident command as the surveillance of the epidemiology shows that the coronavirus is, you know, the concern is starting to taper off a little bit. And in line with federal state and county actions, we followed suit and began to reopen the community. We want to be able to recommend the plan for use of the relief fund allocations that have been made. On the next agenda item, we'll be discussing the direct funds that were received from the state of Texas, as well as some allocations that cover the Fort Bend and Harris portions of the city. We're also talking about administering delivery block grant funding in ways that support COVID nineteen. CDBG, we talked about tonight, and we'll continue to use those resources for the next two years versus including the stimulus fund as well as our regular allocation for CDBG. We'll also secure and mobilize reimbursement funding for emergency protective measures. This involves our FEMA public assistance resources that we typically go to after a disaster. Those are available for COVID nineteen as they were for Harvey and ICH. And there are three that may seem a little bit off the beaten path, but I think are very important. I thought heavily about the census that's coming up for two thousand twenty. Our two thousand and ten census participation was excellent. We were one of the higher participating jurisdictions in the country. And I think that's spoken volumes to the formulaic allocations of money that we get from the federal government and the state when it comes to things like this. And if we can continue that, we can make sure that across the next ten years, Pearland will be well suited when it comes to those formulaic allocations of dollars, and not just for pandemic or natural disaster recovery, but for the other things that sustain some of our costs. Every, just about all of the money that we have for coronavirus response and recovery is coming in the form of some type of formula grant allocation. And I would say that we'd probably be not in such a good condition if we didn't have good solid census data, beginning with the two thousand and ten decennial census. We do have some concerns, and we'll talk about those in the next agenda item as to how those are being used for COVID nineteen. But they are, again, related to the concern for making sure that we have a strong census participation locally. And that's available to our community through September third, and anything we can do to continue to encourage citizens to participate in that is a good thing. And last two items, of course, we want to secure and mobilize funding for hazard emergency plan update. The Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, as I mentioned, does provide a small allocation of funds for us to make those plan updates. And if we wanted to hire some consultancy or have access to funding for other reasons, the plan development that would include the cost of establishing a recovery plan could be available to us, and I think those grants are typically made in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. So we could have the money we needed to augment the current plan and make sure we've got a solid footing for the document that needs to continue and to be in place. And lastly, I think one of our recommendations, and councils had some discussion about this, but we'd like to investigate the feasibility of establishing some level of a city public health capacity. You know, we had some interesting experiences working under the auspices of larger public health entities like Harris County, Rosaria County, and even Fort Bend. And, you know, drawing in the concern and information and timeliness of information and accuracy and making sure our jurisdiction was well suited with the right information we needed passed on to our citizens and the right resources locally to help deal with the pandemic just wasn't always up to our expectations. And I think city staff agree that if we had more resources in that regard, we would definitely be able to serve our citizens and our local community much better. We think we've done a good job, but again, we're at the mercy of the public health authorities and cities generally do not have that capacity in large part. So we want to develop something a little bit more than what we have right now. Next slide, basically kind of just highlights where we are with some of these items. And there are others in the plan, and we can also add and subtract from that plan. But we've got, I guess, three color systems being used to stay where we are. We face in the reopening of local businesses as well as local government operation. We have demobilized our response structure for the incident command, but I will say that we are also keeping that structure kind of at the ready just in case there's a resurgence in coronavirus cases and we need to ramp back up. We're prepared for that. We are planning for the use of coronavirus relief fund allocation. We'll talk about that in the next agenda item. And we're also in the process of administering block grant funding in ways that support COVID nineteen recovery. We also will be considering what FEMA has to offer as far as our emergency protective measures. I do want to state that the FEMA allocation is not one that the state or the feds are recommending local governments quickly gravitate to. And the reason for that is that it is a twenty-five percent local match that goes along with this particular disaster allocation, which is very different from the way things were with Harvey. We had a hundred percent coverage in some of the cost areas with Harvey, and I think the biggest cost share for the city was ten percent. So it's certainly not being recommended that we just immediately go to FEMA public assistance, but we're kind of watching those dynamics carefully to make sure that we don't wrongfully pursue that as a way of funding some of our concerns. And the other one, of course, is the untimeliness of the response as far as our dollar values when it comes to getting that reimbursement in place. That's taken a very long time with both hurricanes ICH and Harvey, so we don't want to make that our first choice. And then we've got the last three that I mentioned, the census participation, updating our emergency plan, and looking at some level of city public health capacity. Next steps, of course, tonight, we want to encourage council input and discussion on the plan elements and the concept of having a recovery plan in and of itself, adding and subtracting what may or may not be feasible or high priority, and then bring that document back to council June the twenty-second with a revised final version and possibly for adoption if we need to include that in our hazard mitigation plan as we move forward. if we need to include that in our hazard mitigation plan as we move forward. So with that said, we will wrap up that presentation, but council will engage in some discussion.
So Mayor, just to be clear, we're asking for any feedback on that 15-page draft plan that Joel wrote. And again, you know, we're learning and we're adapting and we're doing this as we go along quickly. And so we need a little bit of latitude. I mean, this presentation we finalized today, but we were able to get you the draft plan in your packets. So any reactions to that would be appreciated as we fine-tune that and bring it back to you in two more weeks. That's all, sir.
Yeah, I think we're making some good progress on that report. I think we've already taken some steps in that direction. Counsel, I have any questions as to this board regarding this item, item four?
Yes, I do, Mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, Joel, is there, I didn't see anything mentioned in there, and it might be just kind of, you know, stuck in there somewhere. About any training for any of the frontline first responders?
Good point, and I think that's something that we can look out for. I think that the emergency manager has, you know, advocated for some funding along those lines. And we can certainly start to look at grant opportunities to do so. I think the state, the feds owe some of those trainings, and historically make them available to cities. And I think with the, you know, COVID-19 new reality, a lot of that will be offered virtually, and we can count on our staff to participate. You know, we do and are regularly encouraged by the emergency managers to participate in the incident command training that's offered through FEMA. And I think most of the staff that's been involved in the incident management team, if not everyone, has had multiple layers of training in that regard. And I think it's an important part of the emergency managers' priorities. So we need to incorporate that in the plan and make sure everybody's up to speed on how to conduct business in their, you know, specific world. So I will make sure that we incorporate that, as well as some light of sight on funding that work.
Yeah, you know, I just thought about, you know, all of our first responders right now, okay, well, they've experienced this, but as, you know, we continue to grow at the rate we are, we're always going to have, you know, newer personnel that may have not had this experience in that capacity. And it would be good if there was, you know, we could, you know, kind of put together trainings that were, you know, learned from this time period for future things that would happen in, you know, in this nature.
So I'll also mention that we are looking at getting some training and kind of resource development along the lines of an after-action review of our response to COVID. And I think that'll also kind of help tell the story as far as what we need to pursue with additional training. So we're on the same page. We just need to incorporate that perspective into the plan. So I'll make sure I add that.
Great, thank you.
Anything else for counsel?
Yeah, I do, Mayor. First, I just wanted to thank Joel for his work on this. I just read an article, I think, earlier today about a number of cities that are not able to access the federal resources that are available to them, just because of a lack of capability in that department. And we're lucky to have Joel putting this together for us and making sure that we take advantage of all those funds. Just to, at a high level, I really like and agree with this work. Just had a couple of comments, just in terms of the, just in terms of the 17-page, I guess, plan that we're reviewing, and this was kind of alluded to in what you were discussing. I think as I was going through it, what I would like to see for next time is just to tighten up a little bit the distinction between what's a generic disaster recovery plan and what's the I N T framework that we're going to use for situations as diverse as a protest versus a hurricane versus a pandemic, and then what are kind of the COVID-19 specific elements of that. I think there's a lot of good stuff in terms of both, but if we could just kind of tease those out a little more, I think that would be helpful, and it would let us say, you know, this is our plan as we finish this out, and these are kind of some of the principles that we're going to take from that, if that makes sense.
Really noted, and we'll definitely do that. We want to say that, you know, this has been a team effort all the way. And I want to just say that the incident management team process that we've gone through with COVID was handled very professionally. There were a lot of responsibilities, a lot of, you know, smooth operations. I don't think we fumbled in any regard when it came to the way we handled the planning and implementation process, and everybody just kind of rose to their cap. So I was, you know, proud to be a part of that, and I think that's what you're going to see come out of this in the form of our work is very much team-oriented. So we'll definitely start to kind of perfect this work. It definitely needs some attention, and we'll clarify in the narrative that maybe a little gray and smoky, but hopefully by the 22nd, we'll have something we can live with and support.
Absolutely, yeah. Appreciate that, and I certainly appreciated the hard work from Chief Jackson, Peter Martin, and with the rest of the I N T. So thank you for that group effort and for the shout-out there. The last thing I had was, just on the public health capacity, I would be really interested in staying there. That's something I've wondered about but haven't seen any good data on. What are cities, do most cities our size? Kind of tend to follow, to follow what their respective counties or other jurisdictions are doing, or do they tend to have that? That's something I've kind of looked at and haven't seen, but I just think that would be an interesting data point in terms of deciding what path we want to take there in the future. And that's all I've got, Mayor.
Good. I think you guys were receiving a good part of this discussion. Why don't we move on to item five and tie this all together, and then we can have a kind of composite discussion as we go along. Well, I'll let you kick this off as well.
Sure, Mayor, if you want to. Program number five. So we see some good news. For once, we're in the right city-sized setting, that we received a direct allocation, and this is thanks to the state of Texas. They've taken some of their federal monies and made this $55 per capita allocation to local governments, and been very expeditious about it. In fact, we received our first 20% from this new Texas CARES Act before we received our Harvey reimbursement from the feds from two years ago. So we're in a position, a good position, where we need to strategize and think about how we're going to allocate this Texas CARES Act to the city of Pearland, just over $6 million. And like with everything, I think it's going to be best served and vested if we follow a good strategy towards that. And so likewise, Joel has a presentation to go through that and just lay that out for us. So Joel?
Thank you, Clay. Next slide. So I won't go into too much detail. I think we've seen this several times in several packets and other dissemination information. But just this slide does kind of break down how the Treasury efforts where the CARES Act is concerned were formulated. And I think the important parts to pay attention to, actually two, are that you've got that $139 billion to state governments, which was a kind of, you know, wide sweeping investment. No state's going to receive less than $1.25 billion. The state of Texas received a little over $11 billion. But the U.S. Treasury CARES Act considerations were specifically designed to directly allocate to local governments with a population of 500,000 or more. And so initially, when this came out, we were kind of lost in the shuffle, and a lot of localities were up in arms about, you know, where's our CARES Act distribution coming from? And initially, I think we sent some information out that talked about benefits to municipalities, and those were largely from federal government agencies that had received CARES Act allocation and that we could apply for, or we're going to get through a formula allocation, but nothing to indicate where our local direct CARES Act allocation would come from, if at all. So next slide. Texas, again, we've got $11.24 billion. The states split that up roughly in equal portions of, you know, $65 billion each. The 55% of their allocation is going to those state priorities, but the $5.6 billion that represents 4% or 5% will go to localities with populations of 500,000 or more. But you've got, that's split into $3.2 billion for the 12 counties and six cities that are 500,000 or more. We fall into the remainder of that, which is the $1.86 billion that will come to cities of less than 500,000 that are also in counties with less than 500,000. And the counties that are less than 500,000 also qualify for those funds. Next slide. So this slide kind of talks about those direct allocations. Again, as Clay mentioned, the $55 per capita based on our Brazoria County population is what we'll give directly from the state. And that doesn't include the portions that Pearland and Harrison and Fort Bend. We should see the same kind of allocation come from those counties through county-administered processes and based on the population numbers there. Next slide. There are some other funding sources that we've talked about in this table. You can reference, it's also in the agenda item. Looks at some of the non-CARES Act direct funding that's being provided. We've got some coming from HUD. We, this week, received a notice from the Department of Justice that we received a grant of $40,000 for some equipment we need for decontamination purposes where vehicles and rooms are concerned. We've also got an opportunity to apply for funding that's being issued to the state for PPE and other supplies and materials. We should be submitting an application next Monday for those funds. And there's also, again, the FEMA public assistance resources that are available if we need to pursue those. Next slide. Some of the restricted uses where the funds are concerned. This money is regulated through Section 601D of the Social Security Act, which is the CARES Act. So that section is where you have all the rules and regulations and limitations regarding the use of the funds, what it can and cannot be spent on. We will be subject to the Texas Uniform Grant Management Standard, as well as the federal standards in 2 CFR Part 200. And just to kind of clarify, this money's going to come to the city directly through the Texas Division of Emergency Management. So we've got that 20% that Clay mentioned on hand now, and as we consume those dollars, we'll be able to request reimbursement for additional expenditures that we prioritize over the course of the next six months. The end of the period of performance for these funds is December 30th of 2020, so we have to spend our entire allocation prior to that date. And the money does have to have a direct, expenditures do have to have a direct relationship to COVID-19. We're prepared in those response and recovery aspects. Next slide. We are going to bring forward data-driven planning process. We want to make sure we're looking at the local economic data, the information regarding our impact on housing, where local rent and assistance needs are concerned. We're looking at the workforce and labor statistics data that are coming out of the Texas Workforce Commission. We're talking to our social service agencies, making sure that they're giving us information regarding the number of calls for service they're seeing, the kind of need that's out there, the standpoint of what they do. And we're looking at the census demography of our community, income levels, median household levels, and all that information to kind of help guide our discussion and decision about this. And we also want to make sure that we're considering our actual eligible expenditures. I think the high priority is going to be to make sure that we get reimbursed for the costs we've incurred regarding staff and supply of materials and other needs that we've had during the response. And we want to look for the future as well. This money can be used to attain the support we need to carry us through December and beyond, if you will, where the coronavirus is concerned. So we do have some ideas about proposed use of funds, and of course, as I mentioned, reimbursement of our existing costs is very important. We probably have an estimated $1 million in expenses when it comes to staff participation and management team activities, emergency protective measures, continuity of operations, sanitizing of our facilities, the PPE, masks, and all those kinds of things. The money we spent there, we need to get that back. And we also need to be able to forecast for what we'll need to carry us through the next several months of concern. We are also going to be looking at the recovery efforts where the community is concerned. We've, of course, heard from local businesses, particularly small businesses, that have had notable economic loss. We want to be able to use the funds in a way that makes sense where those businesses and their recuperation efforts are concerned. And again, the social services that are needed in the community, primarily where emergency assistance involving rent and utilities are concerned. I think most of what we've seen as far as how local communities are using this money suggests that these areas are the ones that are high priority. And next slide. Next slide after that, please. One more. All right. So reimbursement-wise, again, we have had personnel costs, the cost of our incident management, planning, and implementation group, expenditures where public safety, emergency medical and health activities. We want to make sure we get those dollars back, as well as the supply of materials that we discussed. We've also had the cost of city incurred technology enhancements. What we're doing right now, in fact, having public meetings virtually, making sure the public process is accessible, making sure that our remote work capabilities are solid, and that the information systems and information technology infrastructure and equipment's there. You know, we need all of that to come back to us, and we need to also make sure that we are at the ready to continue this if needed. Those kinds of costs will be important. Next slide. And then broken up into the community, we've got, again, the individuals and households. Rental assistance seems to be a big priority for most communities, as well as utilities. We are right now seeking information from the Houston Apartment Association. It's been very helpful in giving us a real good idea of what the Pearland apartments are looking like as far as unpaid rents for April and May, and we have a solid idea of the kind of resources we need to allocate in that regard. And of course, there may be a need for ongoing coronavirus testing, and we talked about the small business expenditures and losses that need to be covered as well. One, I guess, asterisk note I have is that for small businesses, we want to make sure that we are considerate of the fact that they may have received some level of support from an SBA or PPP program. We cannot duplicate expenditures there, so these dollars are subject to review for duplication of benefits, and we want to make sure when we go through that process, we have something in place to ensure that we're not covering a cost that another entity or other CARES Act funding has covered. Next slide. And then there's some other possible considerations. You know, some of these are ones that, again, as I mentioned, there are funds that are going directly to federal government agencies. So education is one we want to keep our eyes on, but we also want to recognize the fact that there's a CARES Act stimulus package that should triple down to the local level through the state that is driven by a education for secondary and post-secondary schools, and we want to make sure that we don't, again, duplicate those benefits with our allocation. And also looking out for the future, as I mentioned, we've got social service agencies that'll need support through the period of performance and what the city needs to have in place for our ongoing efforts. Next slide. Lastly, I kind of want to cover the ineligible uses of the coronavirus relief fund. There are some things we cannot do with the money. And this bullet-pointed list is pretty consistent with the guidance. And so we published this on a number of occasions. And so, uh, we've published this on a number of occasions to make sure that throughout our discussion, we don't waste our time talking about things we can't do. So these are the kinds of things that we want to make sure we stay away from as far as, uh, spending the money. And next slide, um. Finally, I just want to point out that, again, we do have a, a incident management team established, uh, for a purpose of, of recovery. Uh, our unified incident command structure is being co-led by Assistant Chief, uh, Ron Fraser from the Police Department and John McDonald, uh, Director of Community Development. Uh, we've got various sections of, uh, INT deployed, um, not all of them at this point. But, uh, again, the recovery process is going to be a learning experience. So as we need to, uh, deploy, uh, new sections or demobilize a section that's not necessarily, um, uh, you know, important, we'll, we'll do so. Uh, and we want to continue to maintain situational awareness, uh, for the coronavirus just in case we need to re-ramp up and, and, and kind of, you know, deal with a, a, a wave or resurgence of the virus. And with that said, I believe that's it for my presentation. Um, next slide takes us to council staff's questions. I'll pass back to.
That's a big mouth for Clay and, uh, Phil Hardy. That, uh, that's worthwhile and they kind of keep bringing up data on where we are in some of our needs and operations and what we're, what we're doing about some of them. Clay, did you have any wrap up here on both of these?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So on, on this one, uh, you know, this is the specific Texas cares act. And if we can get some sense of the council of, uh, prioritization of, of these buckets of, of monies that have been discussed, um, I think there should be a pretty, uh, uh, it seems like there'd be, you know, farm that, uh, the city should reimburse itself, uh, for our direct COVID expenses, you know, if that's a million, uh, take that off the top. But then on the other five million, you know, then we can get into those last two slides of, uh, ratios of, of what we can put this, uh, towards the debt itself. You know, it's a combination, we need to spend this all by the end of December. And, uh, we also want it to be done wisely. And we also need to get out to, to help people while they're hurting right now. So, um, the sooner the better, but we need to be smart about it. So, uh, welcome and ask for your feedback on that.
Okay. Clay, it's been a good presentation. I think that, uh, we need to kind of continue this in the next council meeting, but not that this detailed. So like, who we left off here and how, how that worked out, the other project we talked about. And I think it's, uh, something we need to be aware of. A lot of good work has been here, happened right now by some of your staff. And I'd have to give a lot of compliments to, uh, Joel Hardy for the work he's done. That's, uh, he, he's busy on the phone. I get a lot of his calls from, from the governor's office and, and the various people around the country here wanting to talk about what he works on. So I just, um, tell them all, transfer your over to the man he knows. Thank you so much. I think, uh, now the council had any questions, I thought we had gone into the next item of our agenda.
Mayor, I, I did a little bit, uh, that's okay. Um, yeah, I, I appreciate all the work here also and, and do want to just heed, uh, staff's request to kind of set, uh, set some goalposts with the rest of, of council. Um, you know, I've spent a lot of time thinking about, thinking about what are the eligible uses for this and what other cities have been doing, what would be the prudent, uh, way to spend this. And I, I go back to our prosperity plan, which says our two goals are, number one, economic growth and diversification, and two, to be a community of choice. And so with that in mind, I just have a couple of high-level ideas of, uh, how we might allocate, uh, this. Just, and, and to your point, Mayor, I think we can get into the nitty-gritty at a later meeting. But from my perspective, you know, certainly, uh, agree that the, the city should make sure that expenses already incurred come off the top. Uh, of the remaining portion, I, I think it might make sense to do forty percent for, uh, relief for residents, forty percent for relief for small businesses, and twenty percent for other city priorities. And just running through this quickly, in terms of city priorities, I think the biggest ones there are hazard pay for frontline workers, uh, people who couldn't social distance or from home as they kept the city safe or kept our utilities running. Uh, and so if, if staff could, um, you know, if we could have some kind of determination of who those folks are, um, that would be eligible for the, for hazard pay that would be reimbursable by the, uh, by the state cares act. I, I think, uh, that would be a top priority in that bucket. And then the second would be future mitigation, um, PPE cleaners. But also, you know, we, we might be in this for the long haul. We're saying that we, I saw today, we might have at least some level of presence of coronavirus for, you know, two or three years. And so I think to the extent that we can emphasize things that aren't just disposable masks or sanitizer that is gone, uh, immediately, that would be helpful. Uh, some things I've seen are like hand-free doors, uh, protective screens, uh, both of those at places where the public tends to interface with the city a lot, uh, maybe something at parks, uh, in addition to kind of the technological, uh, technological components, uh, that we discussed that could be, you know, more longer-term strategic, uh, things. The second one in terms of relief for residents, I, I think the biggest thing there is probably rent, but I could also include mortgage assistance. Uh, I would include mortgage and utility, uh, assistance for folks who, uh, lost their job. And we certainly need some kind of screening parameters around there. But people who lost their job as a result of, of this, uh, or, you know, because of what the government said, you can't go out to your, your place of work and they're unable to make their, uh, rent, their mortgage or their utilities. Uh, I think that, uh, a significant portion, uh, we should look to helping out those folks in Pearland. Uh, and we just got confirmation today that we're in a recession, uh, from the government and perhaps the, the deepest one in U.S. history. So a lot of people hurting out there and it's a great opportunity, um, you know, of money that we have to spend for this purpose. I, I think it could be well-suited there. I think the other piece there is, um, other social support that was mentioned, you know, counseling services, uh, things in terms of the health response. If, if we end up, uh, finding a channel to, to make their, be brought availability of pre-reduced price vaccines, I, I think that'd be great. Um, and, and also, you know, meal support, making sure people, uh, people aren't going hungry. And then the last portion of that, uh, forty percent for, uh, relief for small businesses. Uh, again, government told people, you can't let customers come in, you can't bring in revenue, but you have to keep paying your bills, you have to keep paying your expenses. And so, uh, again, I think we need to be careful enough to duplicate the, the cares act, uh, items. It's something I've seen, it could be very similar to the resident portion, uh, helping businesses that are, are threatened right now, that are facing eviction, uh, with their rent, their, uh, utilities. Uh, and again, would want some, some screening parameters, make sure they're helping small local businesses, uh, who actually need it. But, uh, I think that at a high level, uh, you know, being smart about this, making sure we're not duplicating any efforts, making sure we're not spending money on something that could come from something else down the road. But overall, I, I think these points, uh, in terms of relief for residents, relief for businesses, and then these broader city priorities, I think that's going to help get us back to work, support our neighbors who are in a tough spot and, uh, leave a strong position for the future. So would, uh, would love to hear my fellow councilmen's feedback on that. I think that, um, kind of setting a, a little bit of a goalpost of a broad strategy, uh, would well suit us as we move forward.
Yeah, I, I would, uh, I would agree on that. I don't know that I completely agree on the percentages. I would leave that up to, uh, Mr. Hardy as he would know a little bit better on what we could spend, um, or what's needed and which, each different area there on the percentages of money. Um, but I did have one question and that's, um, you did mention, Mr. Hardy, that, uh, the schools are getting some kind of funding that's separate outside of this. Does that pay for, does their funding, do you know, does that pay for some of the, uh, meals that they were providing, um, during this time period? Cause I know they originally started out to feed like fifteen hundred kids and it quickly grew to over three thousand. Um, and I know that's an expense that they had to incur. Do you know if that's covered by their monies? And if not, would it make sense for us to try to help out with some of that?
Uh, we're going to be further investigating that. That's a good point. Um, there is the, uh, uh, what's referred to as the ESA stimulus program for, um, education, uh, um, that's coming through the Department of Education. And we have not really gotten a clear picture of what their eligibility or intended spending is. A lot of those funds are coming out, uh, uh, now. So I'm assuming that like the cares act funding that we have access to, it's going to allow them to, uh, get reimbursed for retroactive expenses. Um, but I think Mr. Pearson's in conversation with the leadership in the school districts and we'll keep that, uh, uh, going until we find out more. But we'll definitely tag it as a possible priority.
Uh, I'd like to jump in and also, um, uh, thank Joel for all the work, um, uh, he's put in, uh, certainly early money. Um, I, I think, um, I think in general and broad strokes, we're all going to, um, I think we're all going to kind of agree that, uh, we need to do something in the community, uh, with this money. Um, but I think it surveys the seven of us, seven of us have different opinions about the, uh, the allocations and, uh, percentages and, uh, programs. Um, so I think I'm going to, uh, rely on staff to come up with, um, uh, come up with the fine-tuning measures. Um, I think for me, uh, my priority, my top priority would be to try and expand testing. Um, uh, you know, I think that's going to be, rely a little bit on scientific community to be able to, uh, come up with a testing protocol that is, um, uh, that is a little quicker than what, uh, or provides results a little faster than what we've seen. But, um, assuming that that is, uh, provided, you know, I think the best way to, um, uh, to get a handle on this virus, particularly in, in any community, is to know who has it. Um, so I, I don't think that there's, uh, a better priority for us, um, than trying to expand testing, whether we do that with, um, our medical community in, uh, that's already in Pearland or we're trying to stand something up through staff, um, all of that stuff. Uh, I suspect that cooperating with the, uh, the local hospitals would be, uh, would be, uh, the best way to do that efficiently. Uh, but I think that's the best, best use of this money with respect to responding to this particular crisis. Uh, Clay, um, one, maybe differentiate a little bit, uh, so we're not mixing terms. Uh, with respect to hazard pay and COVID, have we actually experienced anything that would qualify as hazard pay for, uh, to many of our staff?
So, yeah, we don't have that, uh, existence. So this would be something looking back, um, and, uh, you know, we have been tracking our direct expenses. So, uh, the working idea is that we, that see where those areas are, that people have been working and tagged their time to the, the expense. And, uh, you know, we, we do have tiers of, uh, an emergency preparedness plan of people who are, because their positions are required to be onsite, um, and, uh, you know, essential. So I think we can come up with something, um, not everybody's going to love it, but I think we can come up something that, you know, at least our estimation would be, uh, uh, rational and equitable for people who've continued to, uh, um, operate and, uh, provide service, you know, whether that's, uh, in the field or, uh, at a plant, um, to keep the city operating. So, yes.
Yeah, and I, I guess that's kind of where I'm getting to. I mean, I, I want to kind of steer away from the term hazard pay because that tends to, uh, that tends to denote, um, um, first responders and emergency operators only. Uh, and those are not necessarily the only individuals that are going to have to put in extra hours in response to, or had put in extra hours and may continue to put in extra hours in response to this, uh, pandemic. Um, like you said, public works, um, uh, people who are operating their plants, uh, things of that nature that, um, you know, are receiving greater use, uh, or, uh, were having more, uh, stress on systems that weren't, uh, intended to, um, have, uh, parks are shown that weren't fit, uh, intended to be used as, uh, robust as they have been over the last few months. So, um, I mean, I, I, and I'm not nitpicking, but I, I, I do think that we need to allocate the money for, uh, staff that is working overtime, uh, in response to this. I just don't, I don't want to parse it with the term hazard pay and limited, uh, or get the expectation that's limited only for first responders when we have other, we have other departments that, um, uh, that are sifting the priorities. Um, on the, um, on the small business assistance, um, I guess the logistics of it is what, um, what I would want to try and work out and maybe try and find some direction, uh, either now or in the future from, uh, from the community and staff. Um, you know, I, I agree, Joel, um, with, um, and with, uh, the other two councilmembers that have spoken already. We do need to provide some sort of assistance for, for a lot of our businesses, our local businesses that, um, uh, that are hurting and are struggling to keep open, but would otherwise be able to stay open were it not for this pandemic. Um, you know, we don't want to help, uh, businesses that, we don't want to prioritize helping businesses that would survive on their own and this is, uh, and this pandemic has not necessarily affected them negatively. Um, we don't want, um, use this as a bailout for businesses that were already failing, uh, prior to this pandemic and this just kind of pushed them over the edge. And we don't want to pro- uh, provide assistance for, uh, businesses that have already received assistance. It's a lot of information to kind of vet through. And I think that really requires the committee to be able to, um, take a look at who the applicants are and what their unique situation is, uh, generate a, a questionnaire and a vetting process for that. Um, I, my, my initial inclination is that should be a combination of PEDC and or, and the Chamber of Commerce working in our business community to try and, try and, uh, vet this information rather than have city staff deal with that. Um, again, that's an inclination. I don't know if that's, uh, practically, uh, that's worth, uh, or that's going to be the best way to do it. But, uh, I'd like to at least take a look at whether we can have PEDC, um, serve in the capacity there. Um, Clay, I don't know if you have kind of an initial response to that.
Yeah, I do. Uh, 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 thanks for all those thoughts. That's, that, those do help. But, um, if, if these programs, whether it's rent assistance, mortgage assistance, uh, utilities, um, or small business, uh, to me, we need to recommend some policies and some guidelines and some objectives. And then, uh, the start of a, uh, process. But then we need to have somebody else administer that. I don't think it should be, um, you know, PDC is not geared up for that, uh, staff-wise or, you know, us. And I think we need to be removed from it. I mean, I don't want us to be, you know, trying to decide that. Uh, we, we need somebody that's expert in this and there are firms out there. Um, you know, before, uh, we got this cares act money, PDC had looked at, you know, if they were to get some of their sales tax money, uh, freed up for other uses, they identified a firm, uh, that does, you know, these kinds of business grant programs. And, uh, you know, I suggest we look at someone like that to administer what the council decides is the policy regardless. So we're out of that, we don't have, we got other things to work on. Uh, and, uh, there's be some administrative overhead, but that's reimbursable as well. But I think it'd be money well spent to leave some experts. So, you know, another analogy is the council already just approved, uh, we, we have a, a Pearland Neighborhood Center, for instance, administer a, uh, emergency assistance program for rent and utilities. Uh, I think the scale of this would be too much for, for that particular outlet, but there's others that could do that and Joel's already stitched around for some of that. So, uh, I, I think we need to keep our eyes on what you want to get done, what the, uh, policy broad objectives are, and then let us find, uh, a, a best administrator for it.
Okay, uh, I think you're, you're definitely on exactly to where I was going. Um, with, with respect to having a, uh, a consultant that can come in and manage the, um, the small business part of it. Um, if we, if we've identified something, uh, a, uh, an organization that can help us do that, I think that's all the better. Somebody who specializes in this and knows this better than we do. Uh, I think that's the, the, the most appropriate direction. Um, and to your point, we do have organizations that can deal with the rent assistance, mortgage assistance, uh, and, um, uh, providing, um, uh, meal services. We already have those organizations in place. I think, um, I, I, I feel confident that we, if we fund those organizations, uh, properly, they'll find a way to, to deal with the, um, uh, deal with the money appropriately and deal with the, uh, the influx of, um, of new customers. Um, this is a third line, I think you're right. Neighborhood, apparently Neighborhood Center is, um, is probably the top-of-the-line, uh, organization that has dealt with this in the long, long term. Already have an infrastructure in place, already knows what to do, um, to be able to, um, uh, get assistance out to those who need it. Um, uh, actions asked is, is already, already in place. Uh, council collections for the component of it that is dealing with, um, uh, mental state of, uh, state of our, um, of our citizens, a great organization to probably help with this. Um, I would also probably encourage us to reach out to women in leadership society to deal with, uh, particularly. to deal with particularly single, single mothers out there. They've already got some infrastructure in place to be able to get some allocations out to those, those, those individuals who are struggling to get through. A lot of the single mothers that they deal with have, are obviously single income, probably don't have the most secure job when it comes to COVID, and could definitely use the assistance. And I know we've got some, we've got some, some people in our community that we, we see kind of regularly that involve that side, or in that organization, certainly out there. Those are just throwing out some ideas, but I do think those are the, our highest priorities. Reimbursement of the city, I think, for whatever expenditures that we can, we can associate so long as it doesn't exceed, I think, that million-dollar threshold or too much for, over, without maybe some authorization from a council. I think that's, that's certainly the first best stepping point. And, you know, there's a few other things I think we can, we can certainly talk about in more detail, but I think structurally utilizing our existing organizations for the personal needs and then getting a consultant to help us with the business needs, you know, get some assistance or some feedback or some input from P E D C and the chamber as we put that online is a necessary step. But yeah, we don't, we don't have to use staff resources to try and make difficult decisions. I think that's, that's best. That's all I have.
Clay, I think your staff has done a good job in bringing us together, and I'd like to see this at maybe a, a council meeting, or two council meetings from now. That'll have a heart into us a, a kind of a progress report on certain areas that we need to be concerned about and that we need to work on. So I think this has been good, and unless the council has some objection, I'd like to move on to the new business item number six.
Mayor, if I could add just one more thing to this discussion, just, it will be brief, I promise. I agree with Councilman Brad, it's the top priority, also Councilmember Orlando, and pretty much everyone who's spoken at our, our objective should be to reimburse actual expenses. But one of the other parts of this that I really wanted to try to bring forward is the communication aspect, and I think also talking about trying to put some type of the public health capacity, you know, onto, you know, our, our, our city services, I think would be a good addition, but I think all of the things that we're talking about doing, and this has been brought up several times by myself across a myriad of different items when we're talking about budget, is just communication in general. So I think, you know, looking also at ways that we can better our communication. We've already had several conversations with staff about trying to build better databases, be better connected with different civic groups, HOAs and things like that in the city, and trying to make those connections really stick and, you know, on top of those as we move forward. So that way, they can not only just serve us and, and communicating with the public about what we're doing with response, you know, in response to COVID, but also for, you know, obviously, future issues that we have that comes along with hurricanes and whatnot. Any type of emergency situation where we need to communicate, I think we can do a better job of communicating, even if that's setting up a, you know, a, an easy dial city hotline or something like that. We're doing an audit of our city website, just different ways that we communicate. I think we can do a better job there, and I'd like to explore ways that we can do that, including also exploring ways to automate processes such as signing up for, you know, if we talk about the rec center and things like that, figuring out ways to make it easier for people to sign up for memberships so they don't have to interface with staff, things like that. Just trying to make all of the processes that we currently have a little bit simpler and make it easier for the public to interface with us. Because I think all of these things are great, but if we're doing a poor job of connecting and communicating these things out, then I think it's, you know, they're not being as impactful as they could be. So that's one piece that I definitely wanted to make sure that we did not overlook. Anything we can to bolster our communication efforts. I would be 100% behind that if I can get anybody else in council to go along with it, so be it. But at least city staff knows about it now. Thank you very much, Mayor, for your time, appreciate it.
So why don't we move on in our agenda, if you don't, if you don't mind? Item number six is Councilmember Moore. And there you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of Possible Action Resolution Number R 2020-108, so move.
Councilman Little.
Mayor, Mayor?
Mayor, we have a motion and a second. Have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Thanks, sir, this is an actual action item, and, and one of the slides Joel had, there's a number of grants that we're, we're monitoring, and one of these is this State of Texas Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding. So the resolution here would formally authorize us to pursue that, and we'll put that in the mix of funding sources that we're looking at. Nothing to add.
We have a motion, second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owen? Councilmember Owen?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero to approve Resolution Number 2020-108.
Moving in our agenda to item seven, Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor. To consideration of possible action, Resolution Number R 2020-89, so move.
Second, Moore.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Thanks, sir, we, we went out on the street and solicited proposals for cleaning services at our various, wide variety of city services. So this is a new set of proposals that we evaluated. After evaluating those, as we're allowed to do with this quality-based system, we recommending A and A, they have, they are the incumbent firm. So we're familiar with their work and very comfortable with that. So recommending here, this is noted for July to next July. Nothing to answer.
Okay, council have any question or comment based on staff report? I think that's a good choice, personally.
Clay, is our plan to do this year to year, or to add on extensions on to this contract?
No, just like all these, there'd be, this would be the first one, and then there's an additional two one-year renewals as we, as our template, at least.
Okay, then, yeah, I think this is exactly what we, we've tried to encourage, is to have local entities perform these services so that our money circulation turn away particularly, one that has been charitable and an owner that has been charitable to, to the community. So I think this is, this is a good use of, of our funds for a necessary need for a company that is local, so fully support of it.
Okay. Council have a motion or a second on this item? Very none, Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owen?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore? The motion passes seven to zero to approve Resolution Number 2020-89.
Moving to new business item number eight? Woody Owens, bring him up. Woody?
Who?
Did you hear me?
You're on board. Woody?
Consideration of Possible Action Resolution Number R 2020-32, so move.
Second, Hernandez.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report on this item.
So part of our reimbursement in existing streets involves a annual contract cooperation with Missouri County, and some of their contracting and equipment. The difference this year is that rather than just doing a, an overlay, we're going to be pursuing a depth replacement. These have been areas that have been identified where that's a better treatment. So we'll get a longer life, but we'll be doing less miles, but we believe that's a smarter trade-off for that, so about $300,000 worth of our costs to participate in this. And we'll get about two, lower than two and a half miles roughly. We're looking at Stone Road and Harkey as, with this program, and we're going to be ready to roll and get this going. Nothing to add.
Council have any question or comment based on our staff report?
Yeah, Trent, if you could just provide us some sort of breakdown on how we use, or what we use to select the, the projects.
That okay, Clay?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, so you just want that as a follow-up, or Trent, do you have something?
I think the, the general basis of it is, is our pavement condition index that we conducted several years ago, and then updated a couple of years ago. And so we've, you know, taken a look at the different types of roadways that are the highest priority on there, and then the roadways that are the higher classification, with more traffic on those, those are the ones we've been working with the county on. And then the smaller ones that the equipment we have that'll work better on in smaller neighborhood roadways, then we do those in-house through our own program. And then depending on funding levels annually, we look to see whether or not there's something else we could contract out.
Okay. Thank you for the, thank you for the additional information and idea. Fully support getting out of the overlay program and doing full-based replacement. Overlay for just a band-aid, if we want to fix these roads. Really, we need to convert them to concrete, but this is a good intermittent stuff.
Any other questions or comments? Item Secretary, I believe we have a motion and a second on this item.
Councilmember Owen?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero to approve Resolution Number 2020-32.
Moving in our agenda to item number nine, mayor council issues from council discussion. There were none. I think we've taken care of the discussion part of that action, but moving in our agenda to item number 10, executive session under Texas Government Code Section 551.087, consultation with city attorney regarding economic development negotiations and under Section 551.072 for consultation with city attorney regarding the sale, lease, or exchange of real property. And as we go through this process, we, we need our city attorney to, to step up here and some guidance on these items.
Mayor Reed, just to clarify, as we get ready to leave, to go into executive session, if you will just simply recess the, the meeting at that point in time, now that you've noted the provisions of the government that we'll be meeting under, and then the council members will leave this meeting temporarily while we, and then they will, through a separate invite, go into exec, executive session. And then following that, the council will return back to the open meeting portion for any action that will be taken at that time.
Okay, this time we will recess and move into our executive session at seven, at nine thirty. Very good.
New business item number eleven. Uh, number nine, uh, considering possible action regarding the liberation regarding economic development negotiations.
Uh, yes, Mayor, uh, make sure, I recommend a motion for the city council authorizing the Economic Development Corporation to enter into a loan agreement with Prospect seventeen oh four and to also enter into an, an addendum to a development agreement with Prospect fourteen oh seven as well as a, a amended reimbursement agreement with Prospect fourteen oh seven as discussed in exact session.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on that motion?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't capture who made the motion and who seconded the motion.
Uh, member Perez made the motion, member Moore made the second.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. I think we have motion second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
None attended.
Okay. Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Moore.
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Moving into our agenda, the new business item number ten, consideration possible action regarding the sale, lease, or exchange of real property.
Yes, Mayor, I would recommend a motion, uh, authorizing the Economic Development Corporation to enter into an agreement for the sale of, of real property owned by the EDC to Prospect seventeen, uh, zero four.
So moved. Turn and leave.
Second, Perez.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, I think we have one for second on the floor.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
And Councilmember Owens is still not present.
None attended.
The motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Moving to item number twelve, new business. Uh, other business there is none tonight, item thirteen. Says that at ten fifteen, we are adjourned this meeting. Thank you for the job you have done, it's good work, guys. Thank you for the job you have done, you're a good worker, guys, appreciate your help.
Good night.
Thank you, Mayor.